Caller meeting to order, it's good to have each and every one of you here. I want to thank each and every one of you for your interest in your county government, and for being here today and taking your time to come out. We're going to do things just a tad bit different today, not much, but Vice Chair Tatum has got some scripture he wants to read from the Bible. Prior to, there's been a lot going on this week in the United States, and he's got something that he wants to read there prior to Supervisor Smith doing the invocation, and then Vice Chair Tatum will do the pledge to the fact. Mr. Tatum?
Okay. In lieu of the events this past weekend, I was just reading over the scripture earlier today, and I just felt that it was appropriate to share, and I hope that each one of you will listen to the words and take it to heart and put it into practice. It comes from First Timothy, Chapter 2, starting with verse 1. It says, "I urge then, first of all, that petitions, prayers, intercession, and thanksgiving be made for all people, for kings and those in authority, that we may live peacefully and quiet lives in all godliness and holiness. This is good, and pleases God our Savior." As leaders of Franklin County, I can, I think I can safely speak for the other members on this board. We need and desire each one of your prayers every day, as well as our leaders in Richmond and Washington, DC. We desire your prayers, that we will seek to do God's will, and that we will seek wisdom. And we hope that whether you agree with us or not, please lift us up daily in your prayers. And that's what I hope that you can gain from this scripture. If for no other reason, the last few words, it says, "It pleases God our Savior." And so we ask that you remember us in your prayers, that we will seek to do His will. Thank you.
I'll ask that you all stand, please. Ms. Smith?
Yes, thank you. It's really great to see everyone here today, so if you would bow your heads with me. Gracious God, we gather here today in service to you and those we serve. Thank you for all of the blessings you bestow on us each and every day. Help us to live each day to its fullest in great appreciation for all we've been giving. Lord God, please give strength and wisdom to us as we serve the people of Franklin County. Give us wisdom and clarity in our decision-making, and that we serve with humility, and that we always seek to promote the health, welfare, and safety of our citizens. Lord, we pray for our country and leaders, that we will all move from conflict to unity and service to you. We pray for those enduring war and conflict abroad, and that you will watch over the people, their families, and guide the leaders to peace and prosperity. I pray for the lives recently lost in the county. Lord, we pray for the families, and that you surround them with peace, grace, and love. Lord, bless us as we move forward. Bless our beautiful county and our country. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, you've had time to look over the agenda, and we need to approve the agenda. I know you probably already know what's going on, or you've read about it. Is there any modifications or amendments that anyone has? Whereas Miss Hadley Scott down at Hadley's Lemonade Stand three years ago, she was just All right, seeing none or hearing none, then I'll take a motion for the approval. five years old.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the agenda as presented.
And whereas, Scott raised $600 for the fund in the first summer, and has since continued I need a second.
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you do a roll call vote on that, please? to raise money for several causes to include running up the NICU and the local warming
Supervisor Jamison?
shelter.
Yes.
Whereas, Scott has consistently demonstrated compassion, professionalism, and innovation
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
in her efforts to address the needs of our community, and is a positive role model to
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
our youth. Yes. I am real excited about this next thing we're about to do. Now therefore bid resolved, that Franklin County Supervisor hereby expresses its deep Little Hadley, I've known her ever since from the very beginning. gratitude and appreciation from Miss Hadley Scott for her exceptional service and contribution She's just like my granddaughter. Well, and her and her whole family. to the welfare of our community. Live next door, have been there, and I'm real excited about this. We got mom, two grandmas, and a brother here. And, well, without any further ado, we'll just do it. And I'm excited. Y'all come on up here and let's take pictures there on it. Family photo.
Okay. Ask me twice.
Huh?
Ask me twice.
Here you go. Now you handle that.
And Hadley, do you want to tell them?
Oh, 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 oh. I understand that we are going to have the fruits of her labor here in just a few minutes, that we've got some lemonade too. You got something to say, sir?
Um, we raised $1,900 to...
She just... Y'all hear that? Got his team crew and the local people back.
Love it.
It was just this weekend.
They got more coming.
Got more coming. See y'all.
Thank you.
We got some lemonade back here. That's pretty cool to get to do that kind of stuff.
Yes, it is.
All right, we got our consent agenda. It was the board's pleasure. You've had time to go over it. Is there any, you want to pull anything? You want to talk about anything? Discuss anything? Is everybody okay with it? I think it's there. Everything on here was pretty self-explanatory. The truck, it's already in the budget, it's already been approved, and it's already in the budget for that. Ms. Smith?
I'd like to pull item number one. Mr. Chairman, please.
All right, any more? Ms. Smith, you've got a question for staff on that, or you want to talk about that? Is this something that can be resolved, or do we need to?
Yeah, I had talked to Mr. Whitlow about it, but without, you know, any feedback at the time, so I'll just tell the board my question, which is, I, in having served as chairman of STEP Board for several years, one of the things that I questioned on this application block grant for CDBG was whether the Head Start Policy Council is involved in this process for approval purposes, which might slide some of the timeframes that's in here. I was just curious if that's going to be part of the process.
Willa?
Sure, thank you. Yes, Ms. Smith and I spoke about this yesterday, and I do think Michael Armbrister with STEP and Kathleen McAvoy are here. We passed that question along, and I'm sure either or both could probably speak to that question, so, Mr. Chairman, I know they're in the audience.
Please, come forward. Let me see.
Michael Armbrister, the executive director of STEP Incorporated.
Armbrister, good to have you here today, sir.
Thank you.
Can you address that question for us, please?
Yes, absolutely. First, thank you for considering this partnership with us. I think it will open a lot of opportunities for us and for the residents of the county. We will work with Policy Council for the application. We won't need to for this application. If we go into implementation later on, we will, but Policy Council will be involved in the entire planning process, specifically for the pieces that are appropriate for our Head Start program.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Armbrister. I really appreciate it.
Absolutely.
And I've never got to formally welcome you to your role, but welcome, and I hope you're having a really good experience at STEP.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Thank you.
Do any other board members have any questions for Mr. Armbrister? I don't think so. Thank you, sir. Thank y'all for being here. Ms. Smith, is that...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, we're going to put that back in now?
Certainly.
All right, we'll put that back in. Okay, any others? All right, need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as proposed.
You have a second? Second. Madam Clerk, will you do a roll call vote on that, please?
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. All right, Mr. Casella, V-Dot, it's your turn, buddy.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Glad to be here today on this steaming hot day. And of course, you put the cute long lady up here before me, and now you've got to come in, you've got to look at this mug, but we'll get through it.
Sorry about that, buddy. I didn't do that on purpose.
Yeah. Well, we'll start with maintenance activities for the previous 30 days. Both lemonade, both Hopkins Road and Green Level Road pipe replacements there completed. And Griffith Hill, the superstructure, Route 637, that is completed as well. And the plant mix schedule is completely done for this season. We'll begin fiscal year 25s. On to the next 60 days, skip down to Dudley Amos. I know we've talked about this one a couple of times with the really severe patch we had to put in place. There's still some washboarding, so we're going to put some plant mix patch over top of that. And then we've also put it on our fiscal year 25 schedule for surface treating the road.
Thank you, Brian.
Yes, ma'am. Happy to report 718 McNeil Mill, let me try that again, McNeil Mill Road pipe replacement. We've replaced a 60-inch pipe, it was a 48. They finished backfilling yesterday evening, and we plan to pave over that tomorrow, so we will open that road quite earlier than anticipated, so hope to have that open tomorrow. Switch over to page two. You can see what our surface treatment schedule is planned for this season. The Whitehurst contractor, and that's being managed out of the district, but they're working on all these routes that currently, well, I'll list a couple that are complete down towards the bottom, the bottom three. Route 648 Stanley Branch Road, Route 798 Nob Church Road, and Route 903 Horseshoe Point Road. Those are completed, and they're currently working on Route 788, 789 Dry Hill Road. So they'll continue to make progress through those. And page three, bring up a couple of completed safety studies. We've got a review for guard rail. Mr. Mitchell, I know that's in your area, you requested it, and we did do a review of it. It was determined that it would meet the warrants for guard rail, however, it's not constructable. So what we're going to do in lieu of that is, we have some curve warning signs out there, but they were either missing or laid down. We had some edge delineators that are out there. We're going to straighten those up, and we're going to add a few more. So hopefully that will present, you know, be clear going through the curve there. And then I guess, last month, Mr. Quinn, we quoted on Route 938 Standford Road, and we refer to it as Rock Cliff, unfortunately, so we just want to make a public correction on that, that the section that's getting, center line, is actually Standford Road, which begins at 945 Kemp Ford and goes out, and then it changes names to Rock Cliff, so just to make that clarification. And then on your last page there, the first three items, they are the bundled projects on Route 220. They've been out for bid, the bids are due at the end of July, and my understanding is, I think we have a couple of bids that are coming in, so we can, hopefully they'll be within our engineer's estimate. And I'll just mention, Route 1136 Goldfinch Circle, that's a rural addition, and we're beginning work on that now, getting all the prep work so we can get it open for charges, and we'll complete that with state forces. Last thing is Route 705 Chestnut Hill, the bridge replacement. The advertisement's scheduled for December of this year. And that's all I have for my report. Be glad to answer any questions, y'all.
Anybody?
I have one, Brian. So I put in a request for Indian Cave Road. It's, there are two places that need repair. It's right at the entrance as you come onto Indian Cave Road off Novelty, and then about halfway down, the road's taken a lot of abuse from the pipeline construction, and so those two areas, it'd be helpful if you could fix those.
Okay, yeah. We've worked with Mountain Valley Pipeline, and they've actually been pretty good about repairing any of the damage that we can attribute to either their entrances or their use, so...
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Nick? If you're on that one, Brian, you might want to take a look at Willow Creek Road.
Willow Creek?
Where they were, had that storage lot right there at the end. It's some damage to that road as well.
I know we've been monitoring that, so we'll check that out again.
Yep. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Casella, it might would have helped if you'd have bought some lemonade like Hadley did.
I hear there's some out here.
Thank you, buddy. I appreciate you. Thank y'all for being here. All right, Mr. Carter, it's your turn. Did you bring lemonade?
I did not bring lemonade, Mr. Chairman. I apologize. I don't think mine would be nearly as good as what you'll get from Miss Hadley, so...
We'll have to pick on everybody about that today, won't we?
If you did bring lemonade, you better talk fast.
You better talk fast.
I can talk real fast. The, all right. So for our finance report, this is through June 30th. This will be our very, very preliminary fiscal year look. We still have about another 30 days worth of invoices to pay, and we'll be going on with year-end accruals and things for a while yet, so... But the big picture for the year, for all of our revenues, we are at 100% or above for several of our items. Overall, on the general fund, we're at about 106%, so that's good. We always project conservatively. For our expenditures at this point, we're all at or below the 100% mark. Some, well, some are closed, but we still have another 30 days for invoices, but no concerns there, so we're within the budget. Expect a very solid year-end result by the time we get some more detailed numbers that we'll present to you. Likely that'll be the August meeting. We'll bring back some of that.
Hey, Brian?
Yes, sir.
What's on your mind, Mr. Chairman? I meant to bring this up last month. I mean, I always catch fines on the revenues, fines and forfeitures.
Yes.
And when you go to the percent of budget, 376.4. Can you explain that to me?
Yeah, and Mr. Carter asked about that previously. We looked into that. Essentially what that is, is court costs. And I reached out to Ms. Ray and Ms. Brown. Essentially, it just is, they are just collecting more. There's not attributable to any one particular item. Historically, we haven't collected as much as we have. Of course, you know, when we project a budget, we trend on the historical collection rate, so it just appears to be collections are up, and it's a consistent monthly trend. It's not something that is like a one time that we could follow up on. That was pretty much the answer I got when I reached out to them.
Fair enough.
Yes, sir. All right, so to graphically show some of that, you can see the revenues on the picture here. We were down a little bit in June compared year-over-year. We were up in May. It's a cyclical, and so for overall, we're pretty consistent where we want to be. Break that down into major categories for you. Property taxes are up, we would expect that, have a little more detail on that. Local taxes are up, and revenue from the Commonwealth is up as well. We would anticipate some of that, some of that's going to get evened out as we do accruals, but we have increased costs on some state programs. We'll get into a little more of that. We expect more revenue out of those for the reimbursement piece. So real estate up year-over-year, about 3.6%, so that's about a million and a half. A good chunk of that is the rate adjustment. So when we propose a budget, of course, we propose a fully equalized rate, or we projected, so there is nominal growth in there. Typically, if you remember in our budget, we project about a $500,000 increase from new construction year-over-year, so that's a portion of it. The rest is going to be our first portion. That was due June 5th of the new rate. Okay? Personal property's doing well. It's about 9.4%, 19.4%, apologize. That's just under $3 million. So if you remember, last year, we didn't meet budget, so we were very conservative this year. I think we were a little too conservative in what we projected. We were also trying to measure what, when vehicle values would moderate, and so I know every local government is trying to figure out when the values on some of these are going to moderate. So they seem to be holding steady. They're not increasing like they were. Don't know that we'll see a drop of anything significant, so we're pretty comfortable with where collections are and what we did in the current year budget, but it is something that we'll continue to look at as we get closer to that December 5th due date for personal property this year. So for local sales tax, we're about 13.7% year-over-year, and so that's about $1 million over where we were last year, and you can kind of see the line on the collection. I think a lot of it has to do with the higher prices. I don't know that it has to do with volume. Anecdotally, I think we would see that it probably has to do with higher prices necessarily, not indicative of what I would consider robust economy from a volume standpoint. Mills tax had a very good month of collections in June, and so that ended the year 7.6% above prior year. Mills and occupancy are much lower, so it's only $112,000 year-over-year of an increase. Transit and occupancy did not meet budget. That was the one, the one that we just couldn't get to meet budget. We ended the year about 7.1% down. It was about $55,000 that, below budget. So of course, the others are offsetting that, and so we did moderate our occupancy tax budget projection for this fiscal year, monitor that as well, so... So for expenditures, we were up a little bit in June compared to the prior year categorically to show that for you. Overall, we're where we'd expect to be. You see certain increases, the larger areas are where you see the, for the current year, or I guess I would say the prior year now, with 24, the yellow bar. There would be certain increases expected based on the salaries and the increases in certain mandated line items, I'll say. But the bigger areas are going to be public safety and health and welfare, because that's where the most employees are and where the largest budgetary items are. So you'll see a bigger spread on those. So to show you that, we've been talking about, social services is mostly realistically just personnel costs, more than it is any line item in their budget. CSA is seeing a significant increase. We do anticipate, right now, there's a lot of true-up that goes. CSA actually goes through September 30th as far as prior year for our state portion, but we're projecting to be about $1 million over budget, and so that is just indicative of the complexity of cases we're seeing and the ever-increasing costs. And mostly, that's residential and private day, special education, private day, so... Now, that $1 million is a gross number. We do receive state reimbursement. It averages about 30%, so we would still be on the hook for about $300,000 of that increase. So this is really unchanged from prior month. Our fund balances and reserves, we're still at the same spot. So what we will have for your August report will be through July. We'll reset, have a preliminary new fund balance projected for new year-end results, and then we'll kind of recalculate that 20% minimum and all those items for you. And really, just a quick economic update for June activity, it was a 3% CPI increase year-over-year. It was actually a 0.1% decrease overall from the prior month. If I remember, the producer price index went up, so food costs and energy is just still the major driver and all of that, and you still have housing that's elevating the inflationary levels. The Federal Reserve, the Open Market Committee, has not met since last month. They have a meeting at the end of this month. The talk in the circles now is that where we don't expect a rate cut out of that meeting, there could possibly be a rate cut at the September meeting. Right now, the Federal Reserve rate is around 5.5%, 5.25%, 5.5%. Of course, that drives the other rates that we would do to borrow money or otherwise in the economy. So a rate cut with that would make borrowing cheaper. The other thing it'll do, of course, is lower the rate that we earn on our investments, and so what we're monitoring on that, we have, we projected overall for the year a 3.5% interest rate. So we've got a 2% spread right now, I guess is what my point is. So the Federal Reserve would have to significantly reduce interest rates to impact our budgeted projection. So we're not really concerned by possible rate cuts at this time for the fiscal year based on the methodology we're here in the market. With that, Mr. Chairman, that's all. Happy to have any questions.
Anybody got any questions for Casella? Casella, have you seen, as far as the twice-a-year tax collection, have you seen any changes? Is it better, worse, tit-for-tat? What's your thoughts?
As far as just logistically, there's really a difference. I will say the benefit for, that I see from just a pure financial standpoint is it improves cash flow. And so we're able with the twice-a-year to keep cash flow at a better elevated level, which helps us earn more money on investments, because it's not one influx in December and then it dwindles the rest of the year. But it also helps us from cash flow purposes, for grant reimbursements or other things, to float that if we need to. So from that standpoint, financially, I would say it overall has been better from a cash flow perspective for us to maintain a cash balance more consistently throughout the year.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Does that open up any more questions for any other board members? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Good, good report. All right, Ms. Poe, if you'll come forward, I think you're going to introduce Mr. Arnett, and we're going to discuss the Economic Development Strategic Plan. Good to have you here today.
Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the board. I would like to introduce you to Erin Arnett with Arnett and Muldoon Associates. They are the firm that was chosen to complete the Economic Development Strategic Plan about 18 months ago. So Erin is here to give you a brief presentation. In following that, you'll be able to ask some questions. My hope would be, if you would like to discuss this further, we could plan a work session in the coming months to discuss priorities and then the implementation of the plan. So with that, I will turn it over to Erin.
Well, thank you all for having me today. It's nice to see you all again. I know we've met with most everyone here in the room before on this project. And as Danny mentioned, we've been working on it...
Sir, will you speak into the mic, please?
I'm sorry, sir.
Thank you.
As Danny mentioned, we've been working on this for about a year and a half or so, and, you know, obviously, your efforts, your input, your help in this process has been, you know, super helpful with us getting to where we are right now. What I want to do right now is just kind of go over just a high-level overview of the process. Y'all will remember, you saw us, it's probably, it's been several months now at the economic forum we had over at the Franklin Center, and we talked about the plan. It has evolved slightly since then, as you all have had some evolution in economic development leadership here, which is awesome and great, and they have been, you know, helpful in us moving this one forward to make sure that we had a economic development plan that is relevant to today. So overall, I just want to give you just sort of a overall presentation of the process, and just some high-level overview of some of the strategies and implementation actions that are included in this. The main thing is, I'll just remind you, and you all know this from the last presentation, that there has been a high level of community input in this plan. Again, it started, as Danny mentioned, about 18 months ago. We had loads of stakeholders to help us, you know, sort of frame the challenges and the opportunities that we have here in the community in terms of economic development. Of course, we met with you all individually to talk about your perception of the economic challenges and opportunities in the county, as well as your individual districts as well. And then, of course, we met with numerous stakeholders across the process, whether it be the general public or key...
They are the firm that was chosen to complete the Economic Development Strategic Plan about eighteen months ago. So Erin is here to give you a brief presentation. In following that, you'll be able to ask some questions. My hope would be if you would like to discuss this further, we could plan a work session in the coming months to discuss priorities and then the implementation of the plan. So with that, I will turn it over to Erin.
Well, thank you all for having me today. It's nice to see you all again. I know we've met with most everyone here in the room before on this project. And as Danny mentioned, we've worked, been working.
Sir, will you speak into the mic, please?
I'm sorry, sir.
Thank you.
As Danny mentioned, we've been working on this for about a year and a half or so. And, you know, obviously, your efforts, your input, your help in this process has been, you know, super helpful with us getting to where we are right now. What I want to do it right now is just kind of go over just a high level overview of the process. Y'all will remember, you saw us, it's probably, it's been several months now at the Economic Forum we had over at the Franklin Center, and we talked about the plan. It has evolved slightly since then, as you all have had some evolution in economic development leadership here, which is awesome and great. And they have been, you know, helpful in us moving this one forward to make sure that we had a economic development plan that is relevant to today. So overall, I just want to give you just sort of a overall presentation of the process and just some high level overview of some of the strategies and implementation actions that are included in this. The main thing is, I'll just remind you, and you all know this from the last presentation, that there has been a high level of community input in this plan. Again, it started, as Danny mentioned, about eighteen months ago. We had loads of stakeholders to help us, you know, sort of frame the challenges and opportunities that we have here in the community in terms of economic development. Of course, we met with you all individually to talk about your perception of the economic challenges and opportunities in the county, as well as your individual districts as well. And then, of course, we met with numerous stakeholders across the the process, whether it be the general public or key business owners, employers, what have you in in the community. So there's been a high level, again, of community stakeholder input to get us where we are today. Part of that was with, you know, this this public engagement process that that began with a community survey. And I'm not going to go over the details of this. We went over that in the last meeting. But I just want to bring this up again to say that we had over eleven hundred responses in this survey. That is way higher than you would need to have a statistically valid sample in this community. And I think it, I think it's a testament to the people in this community, in this county, wanting to be a part of sort of describing their vision for the future of the county, and particularly when it, when it, you know, when it, when it relates to economic development and business development. So that was great. Didn't expect that much participation. That was incredible. That was awesome. That is also due to your staff, by the way, for publishing this, promoting this, and making sure that the word got out about the the survey itself. So we also did a kind of as at the beginning of this process. I mean, it's an Economic Development Strategic Plan, so we did a comprehensive market analysis that that sort of went into this plan that really was that underlying data side of understanding what those economic opportunities and challenges happen to be that led us to those strategies, which we'll get to here in in a second. You know, we looked at demographics. We looked at residential demand and opportunity and growth. We looked at the retail market itself as well, retail and commercial, not just within, you know, the county as a whole, but also within the different villages that you all have in the county. That was one of the things that we looked at was very important, because we know that you are one of the largest land area counties in the state. And one, one of the things that we learned here, even though we've worked in this county before, is the different villages, the different areas of the county are just so uniquely different from each other. So it was very important for us to look at certainly the the economic market as a whole, but also drill down into those specific areas that you have here. We looked at tourism. We looked at employment. Obviously, that's a huge factor here, employment. You've got Summit View, but you've also got some major employers here in the county, which really are driving your economic future here right now and into the future. Some of the kind of by the numbers look as as we see this is all the, all of this is detailed in in the report that you all have. But a couple of things is income level. If we look at your median household income in Franklin County, it's sixty seven thousand dollars. That's in the mid-range of the larger region. The data that we have, the most recent data is twenty twenty-three, so it's pretty up to date. The interesting thing is, and we all know this, everybody in this room knows this, is that as we look towards the lake, those zip codes, those communities are the ones that have the higher income levels. So that certainly is one of those situations to where, yeah, it's sixty seven thousand is the median household income, and we look at that in the larger region, that's the mid-range. But a lot of that is geared towards the east side. The west side is a little bit lower on the spectrum in term of regional incomes. Another big thing is median age. Your median age in twenty twenty-three is forty-nine. That's up fourteen percent since twenty-ten, since the last census. Not surprising at all, but what this shows us is that your community is aging in population. A lot of that has to do with you being rural. All the rural communities we work in have aging populations. But also, you have this kind of higher end retirement population here in the community that's driving that up as well. So it's not anything we need to be concerned about, but it's something that we need to be aware of as we move into the future. Another thing that we look at is housing, obviously. Just this report, this market analysis looked at all levels of the economy. But whenever we look at housing, we look at affordability. And one of the key factors we looked at here, and I will say this, every single community we are working in right now, urban, suburban, super rural, they are challenged with affordability right now. That is, housing is a major issue in every community we step foot in right now. And I know that's the case here, because you all shared that with us as we went through this process. But one of the things is affordability. And when we look at affordability, we look at whether residents are cost burdened when it comes to housing. And what we would say, a resident that is cost burdened, they're spending thirty, more than thirty percent of their monthly or annual income on housing costs. So that could be rent plus utilities. That could be mortgage plus utilities. And it doesn't discriminate on, you know, lower incomes and higher incomes, because there's plenty of folks that in this world that are spending beyond their means in higher incomes as well. But we, what we noticed here is that thirty-six percent of your renters in the county are considered to be cost burdened. That means, again, that they are spending more than thirty percent on of their income on housing cost. And twenty-three percent of your homeowners are also considered cost burdened. And again, on the one hand, the homeowner number here, we think about almost a quarter of our homeowners are cost burdened. That's a little bit higher than what we typically see, but it's not that much out of the ordinary. More concerning is the fact that our renters, you know, over a third of our renters are considered to be cost burdened. So again, that's something that we know that every single community that I know that I'm working in right now is dealing with this. Certainly, you all are dealing with this as well, and it's something we need to be aware of moving forward.
Sir, can I interrupt you for just a moment?
Please.
What's the, I don't know if you know the answer to this or not. Don't mean to put you on the spot. What's the average renter paying per month?
I don't know the answer to that right now. I can answer that as soon as we finish this meeting, and I can go to my data sources. That's a good question. I have the data right here, but but I just can't answer it off the top of my head.
Yes, sir.
It's a great question, though. Other things, when when we think about kind of the high levels by the numbers, again, there's lots of numbers that I'm showing up here, and I don't expect you all to absorb everything here. But one of the other things that we looked at is retail and commercial opportunity. And the main study we do is a simple to supply and demand study, where we look at what consumers who live in an area are purchasing. And we compare that to what stores in that same geographic area are selling. If consumers are sell, are buying a lot more than the stores are selling, that means dollars are leaking out. They're going to other places, because that particular good or service isn't located here. Now, here, we looked at the everything. We looked at the county as a whole, and then we also looked at the individual communities within the county and the different villages. But when we look at the county as a whole, you all are leaking about four hundred and seventeen million dollars. That was the previous year in retail and commercial sales. So that's a, that's a double sided coin right there. On the one hand, we can look at that and say, hey, our businesses aren't meeting the needs of the residents that live here in our community. But on the other hand, that translates directly to demand opportunity. And that translates directly to those types of businesses and uses that we can support here in the community. We may want to consider recruiting here in the community. That's, that's a big thing there. So I see that, yes, we're not meeting the needs of our community, but that's the writing on the wall and how we can build our economic development future by meeting those those needs moving forward. And again, as I mentioned, it varies from different, from place to place in your unique county that we have right here. And that's covered in the report as well. So the last thing is commuting. And this is pretty common as well. We, I heard this comment, I think, mentioned before. Last year, so this is March of twenty twenty-three, your unemployment rate was about two point nine percent in the county. That's incredibly low. Again, right now, everywhere that we work, we're seeing those unemployment rates being on the lower end, particularly as we compare them to the last five or ten years. So that's a good thing. We also see that sixty-one percent of the workers that have jobs that live in Franklin County, they're commuting outside of the county for for those those job opportunities. Again, you know, I don't think that's that much of a flag for us for two reasons. We normally see that number being higher than that when we're working rural communities. But more importantly, y'all have a significant employment base here in the county, which is, you know, certainly an, y'all are having plenty of inflow as well. People coming from outside the county to work in Franklin County on a day to day basis. Lots more information that's in that that you'll see in the report. So this was an economic strategic plan. So just like any other strategic plan that you all might be familiar with, with your organizations that you work with, there's, you know, we look at an overall vision, we look at specific goals, and then we look at strategies. And that's absolutely what we did with here. The overall economic vision that you all helped us with, that certainly our stakeholder committee helped us with, was that, and I'll just read this here. Franklin County will solidify itself as a regional anchor for economic growth and innovation, bidding off our existing manufacturing base and the craftsmanship for which we are historically known. We will enhance the character of our county through resiliency, diversification, entrepreneurship, and building a strong workforce. And I think that as you look at that, that really kind of reflects the foundation of this community as as a whole. You know, you all are, you know, a a community that has historically had this great manufacturing base here. You still have that here in this community. That's something we don't necessarily see in the places that we work. They've lost their furniture manufacturers. They've lost their textile manufacturer. Well, you all still have a significant manufacturing base here in the community. But more importantly is you're known here for having these creators here. You have people that are innovators and that when it comes to craftsmanship in the products that you build here in the community. And again, that is something you're known for, and that still exists here today. You know, but also, you know, the second piece of of this economic vision is looking towards the future and thinking about the fact that we want to and intend to remain resilient, diversify ourselves, but also that we have that entrepreneurial spirit here in the community. And I think that's something that, number one, is critical to any community that wants to be sustainable. But one of the things that was refreshing to me to learn through this process is that you all shared with us that was important to you, because oftentimes, when we engage county governments, it's about, it's about key employers. It's about manufacturing. It's about your smoke stacks, which you all have that happening here. But you all told us too, you know, we want to make sure that we sort of, you know, cultivate that entrepreneurial and small business environment here in the county as well. And I think that that was refreshing to hear. That is reflected in the economic vision. From that, in the overall Economic Development Strategic Plan, there were five key strategic areas that you see up here on the slide. Housing, we talked about that being a key issue in virtually everywhere we're working in right now. Livability, so quality of life, y'all have an incredible quality of life here in the county. Workforce, all of our communities are challenged that we're working with are challenged with workforce. You know, and we looked at at all of these different thematic areas. You all are between one significant, we're really two significant economic areas, being Roanoke and being the Greensboro area. So that presents major opportunities for y'all, and it also presents challenges for you all as well, particularly from a workforce standpoint. You know, you all can draw people from those larger areas, because you're so close. But the folks that live here also can go outside your community, because those those employment opportunities are so close as well. So that's a big thing. Resiliency, you know, that's very important. We've talked about that already in this. And then overall economic development framework. And that's the piece of the puzzle where what we did is we looked at how you all are doing things from an economic development standpoint right now, and then tried to look at other communities across the state and really in the southeast, and tried to learn from them how they may approach economic development. And and really, the question there is, is what can we learn from those other places and other other counties like ourselves that we perhaps could potentially apply here in this community as well? So that's what, that's what the the plan itself looked at. And then the last few slides, I'll just mention some of the key strategies. There was probably at least fifty or more strategies in this plan, and y'all have got the report there and before you. So certainly, some of the key ones, so I'm not going to share with you every single one. So when it comes to housing, one of the things that we feel like y'all need to do is conduct a housing needs study across the county. I mean, that's something that honestly, in every community where we work right now, that's probably our number one recommendation for housing. It's that 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 piece of our economy is ever evolving. So we want to just kind of take a step back and figure out what are our needs here within the community. You know, one of the big things that we might want to look at here in the county is expanding our residential zoning, knowing that we are a growing county, knowing that the the two, you know, the two, the two more urban areas outside of us are growing as well. And as they continue to grow, we're going to continue to be a receiving area for for residential growth here in the area. So let's look at that. Let's think about that throughout the county in terms of our residential zoning and that sort of planning for that that future growth. You know, another thing we might want to think about, and again, this is something that is, that we're seeing as important in most of the communities where we work at, is let's think about incentives for residential development. We, there's so many places where we're working right now that have a desperate need for housing. And it's market rate housing, it's affordable housing, it's the whole nine yards as far as that's concerned. And it's just not happening. And why is it not happening? I mean, there's not this awareness of the need from the private sector in the community, and there's not this desire from the developers in the larger area to to grow those those residential opportunities in our area. So let's look at thinking about incentives to recruit those residential developers here within our area. And that could be everything from cash incentives to land swaps, which is probably more effective in in a county-wide economic development strategy. Zoning is a big thing in terms of that, thinking about, we talked about that in the last slide, thinking about how our zoning accommodates the growth that we want. That's very important. Thinking about how our zoning accommodates the growth that we want, that's very important. But also infrastructure, again, that's something that was talked about quite a bit throughout this process. And I know that you all, as a county, have definitely focused your efforts on building the infrastructure in the areas that you want to grow. So we want to con- continue that mindset of identifying the areas that we want to grow. Because not every, every area of the county, we, we don't necessarily want it to receive significant residential development, but the areas that it makes sense, we want to make sure it has the appropriate infrastructure to support that. The second one, strategy was quality of life. Again, we're calling it livability. And, you know, I'll, I'll go more quickly on these because I know I shared these in more detail with you the last time we met. But a big piece of this puzzle is we have these great, incredible village centers throughout our county. And every one of them is district, different. So let's focus on reinforcing those village centers and targeting the types of businesses that make sense in those areas. You know, Rocky Mount is different than Westlake, which is different than Faram, which is different than Union Hall. You know, there's, there's definitely different opportunities and needs in those areas. But let's focus on those villages first and make sure that we accommodate the types of businesses and economic growth in those areas as needed. Another big thing here is you all have one of the greatest economic engines in the state, but certainly within central and southwest Virginia, and that's the lake. But also, throughout the county, you have other outdoor recreation opportunities as well. You know, we think about, you know, state parks on either side of the county. You know, we think about, you know, that all of those opportunities for people to enjoy the water, to enjoy our trails. You know, one of the great things that we've seen in southwest Virginia over the last, let's say, ten years or so is the region as a whole is realizing that outdoor recreation is absolutely an economic engine here in our area. Just like years before that, we all realized that tourism is an economic engine. But right now, outdoor recreation is one of those key economic engines of striving tourism and economic growth. And that's one of the areas that you all probably, as a county, could probably really look to strive to grow that opportunity here within the county. You know, one of the big pieces of that larger livability, livability puzzle, quality of life puzzle, two is you are poised to really capture the agribusiness market here. Historically, that's your economy. The great thing is you still, to this day, have, you know, agribusinesses and agritourism businesses that are a key component of your economy, whether it's dairies that you have throughout the county or some of the businesses like, you know, the, oh gosh, my mind's going blank, I don't know why. The, well, it'll come to me, but you have, you have various independent small businesses that are geared towards.
Homestead Creamery.
Thank you, sir. You knew what I was thinking about.
Ice cream, buddy.
Oh, every time I come to this county, I take, I take a couple quarts home with me to my family, and I'm gonna do that today as well. But, but certainly them and then like Melvin's Farm to for work or the, the Callaway Creamery, I'm, excuse me, Calorie Cannery, big difference. But still, you all have these, you all have these agribusinesses that are a key component of your economy today. But most importantly, they're a key component of the historic economy of this community. So we want to make sure that we continue to cultivate that and, and grow that moving forward. And that's all about our livability as well. Certainly workforce, the next strategic theme is, is a big part of, you know, our key strategies here in the plan. One of the big components here is childcare. We heard that that might have been, next to housing, one of the top challenges and key issues that we have here in Franklin County. And I will say this, I mean, this isn't an answer to the, to, to the challenge, but it is something we're seeing everywhere. That is a big thing. And that carries over to quality of life, which we just talked about, that carries over to workforce, which we're talking about right now. That's a huge thing in every place that, that we work in. So some of the things that we think y'all can do as a county from a strategic standpoint is work with your individual businesses, talk to them, survey them to understand what their specific needs happen to be. That'll help frame the challenge for you all as a place. But also do things like, you know, we, we engaged some young professionals here in the county throughout this process. And, and they told us is that, that there's not many of us here, but we want to be here. The challenge is, there's not, there's jobs for us here, but there's not necessarily housing. There's not necessarily childcare for us here in the community. And one of the things I think is mentioned in the report, but you think about our neighboring counties. And you, I mean, childcare is a big issue everywhere. It's a challenge. There's no easy answer to it. But you look to things like Red Rooster Coffee Roasters in Floyd County. There are about seventy to a hundred employees at, at that business. And they realized that was a key issue for, for them and their employees. And they actually started to look at, you know, providing childcare for their employees there. And it's, it's a for-profit business because they, you know, Floyd County is a lot more rural than you, rural than you are. We all know that. So there's a need that, you know, and they, they put that flag up about childcare. And there's people in the county that just want to be there because they need that childcare. But by the same token, they're allowing their, their employers, employees, excuse me, to get first dibs and at a lower cost. And I know they're not making money on that, they're not making bank on that. I'm also sure that they're not losing any money on that because of such a need. But the point is, is that's one of the ways that they're able to sustain their workforce specifically for that business and the county. So thinking about creative ways to provide that childcare, recruiting those types of businesses. And there's more and more types, more and more businesses that are providing that as amenity as in their, their operations. Recruiting small like Red Rooster Roasters and larger that really are, are seeing that as a need and they're providing that. So let's think about, hey, that should be one of our criteria as we recruit businesses, allowing for that type of workforce development and childcare as well. You know, one of the bigger things is too, is you all have this knowledge base here in the community. You've got two community colleges that have a presence here in the community, physical and, and, and regional presence. But you've also got Faram that's right down the road. And we all know that certainly within the last couple of years as we've been doing this project, there's been some changeover in leadership there. And they're looking outward right now. They're thinking about how can we be an asset and a benefit to the community as well? So that's a huge opportunity here that has everything to do with workforce and quality of life and overall economic development, is looking at partnership opportunities for Faram as well as our community colleges that we have. Economic resiliency, I mean, honestly, everything in this strategic plan is about resiliency. You know, certainly some of the things that we think about in terms of resiliency is, you know, we've done a pretty comprehensive economic study here, market analysis here. That data needs to be open sourced, it needs to be shared with all of our independent small businesses as well as our key employers in this county. Quite often, these studies are done and folks don't know about it. And that's okay. I mean, that happens. But I think that we need to have, be proactive about getting the data out to the people that that data means something to. You know, another thing is, and we've, we, we alluded to this before, and this goes into the next section on economic framework, is thinking about overall incentives. How can we, you know, be resilient by providing the right incentives to the right businesses? And in this case that you see here on the screen, it's specifically talking about our agriculture businesses. Because again, we know that, we learned that, that has been an anchor of this community since the beginning of time. And that is also one of the sectors of our economy that's taken the largest hit right now within this county and outside this county as well. So we want to make sure that, that we look at that. And part of that is agritourism. I mean, that's not the piece, that is a piece of the agribusiness model. But that's something that we don't want to neglect. We don't want to put that aside because it's tourism. It absolutely helps our independent agricultural businesses be successful. So we want to make sure that we think about that. And then finally, as I mentioned, there's that overall economic development framework. We feel that we want to, it's important for you all to create an economic development implementation team to lead this plan. And really, that's a staff level group. That's the different departments here that you have under the county umbrella that can look at each one of these strategies in this plan and say, okay, this is my job, this is my role. How do we bring the partners together to accomplish this particular goal? That's something that's critically important, I think, here in the community. Updating the comprehensive plan, that was something that was mentioned over and over and over again in this process. I know y'all have talked about that. I think that's important and I won't go into that. But also, as we're updating that, and we alluded to this before, let's, let's look at our current codes that we have here. Does it support the types of business that we want here in the community? And how can we adjust those codes to allow for the types of economic investment that we want in this community? And a part of that, a big part of that, is looking at our overall permitting process and asking the questions, is this something that is, you know, is this something that really is favorable, that works for the businesses that might come in here and look to invest in this community and open a business in the community? So make sure that our permitting processes aren't overly restrictive and challenging. And again, that's something that we see in just about every community that we work in, but it's something that's very, very important. Part of that is your public-private partnerships. Y'all already do that here in your county, and that's great. And, and many other command counties like you all don't necessarily do that. But maybe there's a way that we can formalize that public-private partnership process to where we can tie incentives to a easy-to-understand process that investors can see and understand as they're thinking about coming into our community. You know, some of the things that, that, that we mentioned early on during this process that you all have already accomplished is thinking about communication strategy. You know, thinking about having someone within the county government that's charged with distilling that community, that, that ongoing, you know, community information to the region, but also thinking about marketing our, our county from a tourism perspective, from an economic development perspective, to the different users, investors that we want to see in the county. So that's it. At a very high level of the plan, there's a lot more granular piece to that puzzle that you will see in the, the document that, that we've passed out. There's this implementation strategy board that really distills everything in the plan, down to very specifics. It starts with the overall economic development vision. It lists the goals for each of the five strategic areas in the plan. It goes over those specific strategies, many of which I've talked about today. But as I mentioned, there's at least fifty or so of those that exist in the plan. The leads, well, first the priority, which is short, medium, and long-term tasks. You know, some of these are low-hanging fruit that you all can implement right away. Others are long-term tasks that require some more planning and funding in the future. Most importantly is, is the, these two columns, is that who's going to lead this? This plan, and any plan that we ever do as, as a company, we're not just looking at our city or our county as being the person that has to, or the, the entity that has to lead everything. Certainly, what we've outlined here is leads that we think should carry the flag of each one of these individual tasks. Many of those are the county, many of those are specific county departments. Some of those are absolutely nothing out, you know, they're outside of the county itself. And the point of all that is, with both project leads, partner leads, and partner agencies, these two columns, is that y'all can't do it alone. You all have partners, you know, whether it be the Beans Mills of the world, whether it be the Rocky Mountains of the world, whether it be, you know, your, your PDCs, whether it be D H C D, whether it be all the agencies and organizations that should play a role in continuing your economic future. They are all laid out in this, this plan. There's also some specific notes of each one of these individual strategies. That's where the detail comes out of the plan. And that's detailed in the report as well. And that's pretty much it. I mean, the plan itself, you know, certainly, there's that strategic assessment, there's the market analysis, there's the overall economic vision and the goals. And then finally, the strategies of, of which I've shared with you, some of the high-level ones here tonight. But that's it. I'd love to answer any questions that you all may have. This is for your information tonight, but absolutely, thank you. Sorry.
Thank you. Thank you for being with us this afternoon. Your presentation was just spot-on, very detailed and very informative. Just a question, with regard to in-migration and out-migration, do you view those as indicators that should be specifically referred to when we are trying to execute strategies and the measurability of those outcomes? You know, and in terms of also leakage, with leakage in terms of you've, you know, illustrated some of the retail leakage, but leakage in terms of residential unemployment leakage. So I'm trying, and you know, just generally speaking, as we think about implementation of these strategic goals, do you view those things as ancillary instructive pieces that we need to keep an eye on? Or are they just generally informative to the process?
They are absolutely things that we need to keep an eye on. They are key components of your economic growth here in this community, whether it be, you know, having more, you know, more employees that live in the county, that work in the county. That's critical. So the question is, and this is included in the, the report, but why is that? What is it that's making people live here and work outside of the county? Is it the jobs? Which absolutely, I mean, you, you all have a healthy employment base here in this county. It's absolutely, you definitely have that. But it's also thinking about the folks that could, that work here and could live here. What's missing there? And I think that goes back to the overall housing and livability portions of this plan. So, you know, I think that setting, you know, setting benchmarks for each of those, you know, in terms of, you know, we have strong data points on the people that, the, the percentage of jobs that come into the county versus leave the county on a daily basis. But I thought also think that we can look at those things like housing opportunities, which we know is a big challenge here. You know, it's easy to work here in the county, but it's easy to live and work here in the county. You know, it's easy to work here in the county, but it's easy to live and work here in the county. That's the things that we want to question and set benchmarks on. As well as, you know, a big piece of that is the retail as well and commercial. You know, we know there, we know from here that there's significant demand here in the county. And again, it varies from individual community to community. You know, most of our retail, as we know, is centered around, and commercial is centered around here in the larger Rocky Mountain area, as well as our employment. But what are the needs of our individual communities, and how can we recruit additional commercial? Because those employees, to your question, and residents that we want here in this county, those are the things that they want and that they need. And y'all live in a competitive market, and it's easy to live in places that are 30 minutes away and commute in. But you all also have a quality of life here that's super desirable. We need to figure out where our gaps are in that quality of life so that we can provide, you know, those amenities that will allow people to live here and work here.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Quinn?
I have a couple more comments and questions. I saw a similar presentation, I think you led it maybe a year and a half ago or so over at the Franklin Center, but a couple of things, at that time leakage was brought up then also. And, you know, roughly you showed we're spending 50% of our money here and 50% elsewhere. And it really makes me wonder if the prevalence of online spending, like Amazon, is driving a huge part of that. And it also makes, it'd be interesting the next time you do this to bring some insight around that leakage, because I have a feeling that some of that might be easy to recover and some might be incredibly hard to recover. You know, there's some low-hanging fruit and some really tough stuff to get at. And so that, that whole thing around leakage is interesting, but, you know, I would suspect 80% of my spend is out of the county just because it's so easy and fast, and it's on your doorstep, and transportation to areas is tough to go get stuff. So that was one comment. The second was around housing, and we had a builder-developer forum in the Union Hall District, and, you know, there were roughly 40 builders and developers that came in, and the number-one point they brought up is having sewer. So you brought up the incentives, and that would be nice, but for them, the number-one point was having sewer. And until you have the sewer, they're not going to come. And so that was kind of interesting, and it might be interesting in your future report to, well, give that some more credence, if you believe it. And then also around housing, we tend to focus on making the housing units cheaper, but a big part of the problem is the income levels in the county are low. And so the, when I look at our housing costs, our land is cheap. We have an amazing workforce that is reasonably priced, so our building costs are pretty reasonable. So you put together the building costs and the land, we have a pretty reasonable way to build in the county. And the challenge, I think, is that your average income is pretty low, and it simply can't afford a unit. Then, just two more things. I noticed the growth from 2020 to 2050, you have it at 6%. In 30 years, that's almost flat. And it's kind of interesting that with all the activity we have going on in 2020 and with the village plans, and we have so much happening that our growth is going to be flat. That's kind of, it's just surprising. It's not a question or a challenge. And then the last point I had, I think in the future it would be good, under the workforce, to include the CTE, because one of the things I think we see is that need to help our kids coming out of school to be better equipped to work in the job market here. They're coming out without the necessary skills to work, and so the CTE and prepping those kids coming out of school, I think, would be helpful. So it would be interesting in a future presentation to include the CTE. That's all.
Those are all great, and I know you weren't, I know you weren't presenting that as questions, and you listed a lot of things, and I know I missed most of the, or not most of those, I heard all of those. But, you know, some of the things I just took notes about is, for clarification, the retail data absolutely accounts for online sales. So when I talk about retail demand, that demand is including our online sales. So when we say there is X number of dollars of demand for restaurant, obviously, you don't do restaurant online, but grocery versus, you know, general merchandising versus clothing, this accounts for what's happening within our county. So we can trust the data in terms of, when I show this here, is that we can support another X number of dollars or square feet of new business in this category absolutely reflects our current trends of online retail, which we all do, right? We all do that. I know we all do that. So that should give you some confidence in the data. You know, another thing that you mentioned about the income in the county being low, it's true, but here in the county, and this is not a, this is not a counterpoint, this is a "and" comment here, is your county is very different than most places to where we work. Because if we look at one side of the county, absolutely, the income is low. It's common to what we see in rural places. We look at the other side of the county, the income is super-high. So it really is something that we need to look at in more of a specific area, sort of, overall, sort of, context. Same thing with development costs. I mean, you mentioned, I mean, development costs are development costs. They should be development costs that are affordable, as you mentioned, in the rural areas and the lower-income areas. It should be the same development cost in the higher-end, wealthier areas in the county as well. So I think thinking about that in context with what our needs are, what our opportunities are in these areas is very important. So those are great questions. And hopefully this, hopefully this plan gives context to everything that you've just mentioned.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any questions? Everybody? Thank you, sir, for your time and your effort. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Ms. Poe, you have anything to add?
Nothing.
All right. Thank you. And for time, we need to move along. We're going to our closed meeting.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, the Franklin County Board of Supervisors motioned to enter into a closed meeting in accordance with 2.2-3711 A1, personnel discussion of appointments to county boards, commissions, and et cetera. A3, discussion of the acquisition of real property or disposition of real property. A5, discussion concerning a prospective business or industry, or the expansion of an existing business or industry. A7, consultation with legal counsel on briefings by staff about litigation or other specific matters requiring legal advice. And A29, discussion of the terms of a public contract of the Code of Virginia as amended.
You have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, we do a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. Madam Clerk, where do you have it set up for us to go for? Near your office?
You can go to B-75.
All right, I think with the supper here?
Yes.
If you want to take supper back there, that's fine. FYI...
...that only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session to which this certification applies, and only such business matters as were identified in the motion by which this closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting to which this certification applies.
I need a second.
Second.
Madam Clerk, we do a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. All right, we, we'll have to go back into closed session because we've got some other matters to take care of. I'll just keep my comments, I'll just...
Democracy dies behind closed doors.
What?
Democracy dies behind closed doors.
Out of order, sir. Mr. Tatum, you've got something to read. I want to make comments, but I'll just bite my lip.
Okay. You won't have, allow other supervisors making a comment?
Let's go ahead and read the motion, and then we'll, then I'll let the other...
Do you want to amend the agenda to include it?
Sir?
Yeah, we need to amend it.
Amend the agenda to include consideration of it?
Yes, sir, we need to do that.
Mr. Chairman?
We need to amend the agenda to, for the consideration...
Of the contract with the Friends of Farum Park.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we amend the agenda to take up the issue of the contract with the Friends of Farum Park.
I need a second.
Second.
Madam Clerk, do a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. Mr. Tatum, you got a motion to read?
Yes, I do. I make a motion that we approve the contract of sale for county property of approximately 84.165 acres identified in the real estate records of the county as tax ID numbers 0800006500 and 0800101900 to the Friends of Farum Park Incorporated and authorized the county administrator and county attorney to sign the contract of sale and all associated closing documents.
Second.
And this would be with the, including the revisions?
This would be with the provisions that were made to the contract that we discussed, which includes the 60-day due diligence that was asked for and the 90-day closing that was also asked for, and the deposit, if something happens and it falls through, it is refundable.
It's refundable. Everything that did was...
It's all in the contract.
Everything that was asked for in the contract was included in this agreement. All right, now I'll open it up for board discussion. Anybody? Mr. Tatum?
I just want to say that I am proud of this turnout tonight. This shows the support that this community has given to this project, and I can tell you, I've said it before, and I'll say it as long as I sit behind this desk, I'm a firm supporter of what communities can do for themselves when they work together. Many of you know I've been active with the Henry Fire Department since its inception. In fact, I went door-to-door knocking on doors, asking people if they would support a fire department before we had one. People from different parts of the county told me I would not live long enough to see a fire department. This is your fire department. This is your project. You make it happen. By you making it happen, we all are better for it. I believe in you. I pray that you believe in yourself, because it's not easy. It's time to roll up your sleeves and go to work. Now, I've done a little research myself over the last couple of weeks. I've talked to some business owners in the Farum area, and they've all told me the same thing. They know when something's going on up at the park, because their business picks up. The owner's 77, manager's at Dollar General, the manager at Dairy Queen, they've all told me the same thing. They know when something's going on. You don't believe it? Go by there Thursday afternoon after 3:00 and visit the farmer's market. And it's amazing, and I'm hearing it from people all over Franklin County, I'm hearing it from people from other counties that have come by. It's impressive. I'm proud of you. I'm proud to be a member of the community, even though I live in Henry, and you should be proud of yourself. And this board supports your efforts, and all I can say is Godspeed, and I look forward to working with you and seeing this come to fruition. And again, applaud yourself for the hard work, dedication that you're doing, and I want to just thank you.
That's all I have. Anyone else?
Just a, just a quick comment. Great to see you all here. I've met a lot of old friends during this project and a lot of new friends, and please do the flea market again. My wife and I had a great time at the flea market. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to echo Mr. Tatum's remarks, and I'm sure you all have realized by now that the efforts and the passion and enthusiasm that you continue to display as a group, as a neighborhood, a farum, is unprecedented in the work I've done over 30 years. It's impressive. It is, hopefully, a contagious thing that can exist throughout our county, and I wish you the very, very best in your pursuits to do all of the things that I feel are so exciting and so well-serving, the residents of Farum and Franklin County. I truly believe that this, that you all are really going to be able to reach all corners of the county with all of the work you're doing. I applaud you. Like Mr. Tatum, I'm very proud to be sitting up here as a supervisor, part of Franklin County, with the work that you've done, so I thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Madam Clerk, we've got a motion and a second. If you'll do a roll call vote on it, please.
Supervisor Jamison? Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. All right, just move forward. Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order with our, we're going to have to delete a couple of things. I mean, we'll bring it up at the end, not at the end, but we're going to get back to our schedule with our public hearings. The school additional state funding appropriation, as in your attachment 10, Mr. Carter, if you'll come, Ryan Carter, if you'll come and address that.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Members of the board, so in your packet, as Mr. Chairman stated, the attachment 10. So the main reason for the public hearing, if you recall, the schools, through the support of, of course, county staff and Davenport, received a grant, a construction grant through their state construction grant program for the Benjamin Franklin Middle School project. So that grant was about $5.6 million, and per state code, anytime we need to appropriate that exceeds 1% of the budget, it requires a public hearing. So that alone really necessitated the public hearing. So in addition, the other major item on the request to appropriate to the school system is the all-in Virginia money. And so that money is, we appropriated some at the May meeting. That money is driven by the governor's office. The schools received about $2.4 million total, and there's an attachment in the back, back behind your packet, that explains that. And so on, if you go about three, well, two pages back, it explains the request from May, but three pages back, looks like this table here on your packet. Basically, that gives you an idea of what the schools plan to spend on their all-in money, that $2.4 million. And it's basically remediation because of learning loss, and it's a three-year, it goes through fiscal year 2026. So what would happen is the board would appropriate, this would carry forward, as would the construction grant money for anything unspent till the project is completed. So those are the two major items. The other three smaller items are a couple of increased revenues that the school system received during the fiscal year. So on the table in your executive summary, you'll see there's increased SOQ funding for the ADM. If you remember, they reset that March 31st every year. That's kind of the final number. So they got a little bit extra money, $342,000 on that, $37,500 for a CTE equipment grant and a security equipment grant of... thirty-seven thousand five hundred for a CT equipment grant and a security equipment grant of one hundred and ninety-one thousand. So all in total for the public hearing, that would be, and what we're looking at is this is all really the, at the prior fiscal year. This is twenty-twenty-four, that just ended June thirtieth. To true up those revenues, once all the final accounting is done on the construction grant and the all-in Virginia, whatever wasn't spent in prior year, based on our appropriation resolution, will automatically roll into fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. So there'll be no further action really needed by the board. But for the purpose of the public hearing, we are requesting the board appropriate additional funds to the school system budget in fiscal year twenty-twenty-four totaling seven million nine hundred ninety-five thousand seven hundred ninety-one dollars. So be happy to answer any, any questions the board may have for additional information.
Anybody got any questions?
Thank you. Mr. Carter?
Yes, ma'am.
Am I correct in, in my review of the materials that the school construction grant is based on a reimbursement basis as funds are with, are drawn down on?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
And so those funds, are they going to be advanced by the county general fund or from the schools?
So the float will be covered by the county. Essentially, the, the county and the schools share one bank account. So anything they spend will draw down against that bank account until we receive reimbursement. And it looks to be a quarterly reimbursement based on the instructions we receive. And so we would float to that time, assuming we would have a thirty-to-forty-five day turnaround period for reimbursement once the paperwork is turned in to the Virginia Department of Education. So you'd probably be looking at possibly a three-to-four month turnaround time from the time an expenditure actually occurred.
Five six, five point six million dollars is a big number
Yes, ma'am.
on a reimbursement basis.
And one of the things, and so this is also, if you remember earlier in the meeting, I mentioned cash flow. This is another benefit of cash flow. This is another benefit of having the reserves and the cash in the bank to be able to cover things like this. So even though it's a benefit to us because we were able to obtain five point seven million dollars that ultimately county taxpayers will not have to pay, and it will reduce the amount that needs to be borrowed off a literary loan. So it's ultimately a very good deal, but we as a locality have to have a cash flow to front it. So we do have sufficient cash flow. It won't be a concern on that. And we would, the, at the anticipated rate of this project, realistically, everything's supposed to be spent by the time school is, is going to open in August. So it'll be a quick turnaround, I'm thinking, on the reimbursement.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else? Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right. No more questions. We will go into the public hearing. So I'll open the floor for public comments on this, on this hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up?
I have no speakers on that issue.
Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to the school board appropriation? Seeing none, we'll go back into, close the public hearing. And board, what's your question?
Mr. Chairman, I will offer a motion.
It's on the second page there.
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the school's request and to appropriate funding in the amount of seven million nine hundred ninety-five thousand seven hundred and ninety-one dollars for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four as presented in this summary.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, if you'll do a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. All right, we'll close that one. We'll go into the Dwayne Walters special use permit, attachment eleven in your book. I'll ask Ms. Cooper, she'll come forward and present. How are you today?
I am pretty good, Mr. Chairman. And I hope you and the members of the board are also.
Our first public hearing this evening is for a special use permit for a short-term rental. It's on point four-five acres. It's zoned A1 agricultural. The address is one oh-four Lookout Point Drive. It's in the Gills Creek Election District. It also has a future land use designation as low-density residential. Some of this I've already covered. Just to let you know, Lookout Point Road is Route ten sixty-one. It is a state-maintained road. If you've been out to the site, you will notice that it does have a street, a steep driveway down to the location of the dwelling. Just to also let you know, water will be supplied by well. Sewer will be supplied by septic system. The closest residence is about thirty-one feet to the proposed short-term rental. According to our records, this is a one-story, um, single-family residence. It was constructed in ninety-four. It consists of three bedrooms, four full bath, has a total living area of approximate, um, three thousand square feet. The Virginia Department of Health did issue a sewage disposal system construction permit for a three-bedroom dwelling in July of ninety-two. This particular dwelling would be able to be rented as a, um, three-bedroom and have a maximum of six adults. The last inspection and record of the septic pump-out program was conducted in February of twenty nineteen. The property is due this year to either be pumped and/or inspected. Mr. Walters is a permanent resident of Smith Mountain Lake. He resides about five minutes away. He currently owns and operates or manages another short-term rental at two thirty-four Pensacola Point Drive. At this point in time, our office has not received any complaints or trouble with this rental. Just to let you know, in January of twenty twenty-two, the board of supervisors did approve a special use permit for a short-term rental located across the street at one oh-five Lookout Point Drive. At this point in time, staff has received no reports of trouble or any violations with the short-term rental that's across the street. Staff has received numerous emails and calls in opposition to the special use permit application. And I think you all probably have had some information sent to you by the clerk. We'd like to give you a vicinity map of the location here in Franklin County. We also like to give you an aerial. In blue is the property that's in question this evening. The short-term rental that I talked to that was approved previously is across the street. This is your future land use map. The area is, the future land use is low-density residential. We also like to give you a zoning map so that you can see the zoning of the area. Most of it is A1, however, you do have some RC1, which is your residential combined subdivision. And you also have some RMF, which is multi-family, which is the pink area. We did want to give you some pictures. This is from the state-maintained road looking down to the structure. This is, um, looking towards the lake. And you can see in the picture the house that's the closest to this property. We also wanted to give you a picture of the back of the property or the, the front so that you could see how it looks to the lake, um, on the main channel. Just analysis, keep in mind that in accordance to section twenty-five-six-thirty-eight, that the proposed special use permit to determine your decision is, is it supplementary, is it subs- substantially detrimental to adjacent properties? Does it change the character of the zoning district? And is it in harmony with the uses permitted by right in the A1 district? And always remember the public health, safety, and general welfare of the community. As we discuss, of all of our short-term rentals, we do think that short-term rentals are, that Franklin County is a prime location and that proposed use would expand the temporary lodging options for guests that visit here so that they can enjoy all of our amenities and recreation within the county. We also want to remind you that this can only be rented for six adults and that usually six adults, it would be similar to something that a residential household would have. It would, um, also to let you know that the property owner would be the property manager. He lives five minutes away. The short-term rental could get there easily if there was problems. There appears to be ample parking. There is four spaces on the driveway. And the owner has said that they, the residents or the people renting could use the two-point-five-car garage that he has. We also, approximately, you have the traffic generated would be similar to a single-family dwelling. And the noise would also be similar to a single-family dwelling. With our analysis, we think that this would not be detrimental to adjacent properties. We do not feel that it's going to change the character of the zoning district and would be in harmony with the purpose and the intent of the chapter of the A1 district. Your planning commission held their public hearing. They did put the following eight conditions. They are similar to, they are the ones that you usually hear. This will be the only dwelling on the property that will be rented for short-term rentals. However, if another dwelling would be constructed, um, they would have to come back through the process. The owner will have to comply with the Franklin County Code, section twenty-five-one-thirty-eight and section five point five-seventy-two. There will have to be proof of liability insurance of no less than a million dollars. The owner shall register the short-term rental in our third-party system, and no rentals can be conducted until this has been done and all inspections and all conditions have been met. The short-term rental can only be rented, uh, for three bedrooms with a maximum of six adults. If it, if there is ever bedrooms added, the septic will have to be, um, approved by the health department to be expanded. The owner shall supply the planning department with the name and phone number of the property manager and contact person. That person is the property owner. He has given us that information. The owner also supplied in your packet of information verification about the electric, electrical connectivity to his dock. Um, I know that has been a source of topic here recently. And the owner shall supply the planning department with a copy of the invoice receipt for the septic pump-outs. These conditions are the same to the one across at one oh-five Lookout, except for conditions six, seven, and eight, those we have added since January of twenty-twenty-two. And I would be glad to answer any questions. And I am almost positive the property owner is here to speak to you also.
Anybody got any questions for this?
Just a quick question. I assume there's no HOA Association in this number?
I do not think that they have an HOA Association. I do know that we have been supplied with restricted covenants for the property. But as you well know, we do not enforce those.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone, anyone down here?
So, one thing about the electrical connectivity, I've been reading some about that since the recent incident. And I know that there was somebody in the business of testing for connectivity at the docks. And pretty much every dock has connectivity. And so he stopped doing that and, and instead is advising people how to avoid a problem. And one of the ways to avoid the problem is lifting the boat dock or the lift out of the water, right? Then you don't have anything touching the water. So I'm just thinking out loud with you, it would appear that you could do the test with the lift out of the water and you wouldn't have electrical connectivity. But the real danger is when you put the lift in the water. So it makes me wonder if you should be testing with the lift in the water. But then all the places are going to show electrical connectivity. So I'm not, I'm, I'm just posing like I'm not sure how this is going to work out.
And I think there, um, I think there'll be more discussion. I know the building official and, um, the development review coordinator in my office, they have had two meetings on this subject with the other, uh, localities. So I think this will be some more discussion as we move forward. And especially if any direction comes from you all as the board of supervisors and other boards for localities that surround Smith Mountain Lake.
So, thank you for that. And, and so one other comment, as I've been thinking about these SUPs, it feels like the SUPs are granted into perpetuity. And I asked Jim about whether we could possibly have these come up for some kind of review. And he said, well, really, you all have the right to revoke an SUP at any point if they're violations. So do you feel empowered to do that?
We have had a couple that we have told if they don't come into compliance that we would be bringing it back to the board of supervisors to revoke, um, the special use permit. And so far, we're, people are coming into compliance or they appear to. But we do not have anything in the regulations, like if you have three incidents that we get actual complaints on, that, you know, you would automatically come back, um, to this board.
No, but if you have a problem, you feel empowered to come back to us. That's great.
I do.
Okay.
As your zoning administrator.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to withhold my remarks until after the public hearing.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Sure. Anyone else? Okay. Is, uh, Dwayne Walters, is he here?
Yes, I'm almost positive he is.
Mr. Walters, will you come forward, please? State your name and address for the record.
My name is Dwayne Walters. This is my wife, Lisa Walters. And my address is nineteen fifty-two Dudley Amos, and that's Manida, Virginia. And, um, what was the other thing you asked me for?
That's it, your name and address, and then you gave your wife's. There's, there's a question out there on the, on the floor already that we need to clear up.
Okay.
Are there any homeowner association rules and regulations?
It's my knowledge that initially one was started back in the sixties or seventies. And that was to run for twenty-one years, and then it would expire. So twenty-one years is well, well over.
So the answer to the question, is there...
As far as I know it, no.
No.
That's correct.
Ms. Carter, does this satisfy you?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Because that was going to be my question. Mr. Sir, you've got a statement, you and your wife?
Yes, we do. First of all, um, the issues that were listed up there, I think number seven dealt with the septic. And we have paid for and had the septic inspected. And at the planning commission meeting, that was brought up, that they had the paperwork for that. It's been pumped, it's been checked, it's been cleaned. So I'm not sure if that, it didn't get, um, noted today, that that has been done. And then number eight deals with the electrical question. And believe me, we appreciate that too, especially after the incident recently. We did have, before our planning commission meeting, we did hire an electric, electrical engineering company, go out there. They tested it with the lift out of the water and with the lift in the water. And there were no traces of electricity found. And they deemed it safe. And that report was also sent to the planning commission prior to the meeting, a month ago. I'm not sure why that didn't reach you all, but I know we paid for it and I, I know it was done. And then, um, the only thing I really have to say is that there is a rental property directly across the street, directly, without incident. And that's been there for years. And I talked to one of the neighbors who is adjacent to it, Lynn Swain. And he said there's never been a problem as long as he's lived there. And he lived there for a long time. And it's my understanding, at the planning commission meeting, there have been no complaints, no complaints to the planning commission about that rental property. We are local, full-time residents of Smith Mountain Lake and have been for years. And we have rental property now. We don't have a single complaint. I've been leasing, um, office buildings and apartments and everything like that for decades. And believe me, I take it serious. And we, we cover all that in the lease and we, we make people toe the line. And we're not foolish. We don't want problem people in there either. And so we make it a point to, to select renters or tenants carefully. The planning commission, as, as she mentioned, they did vote, um, to approve it, six to zero. Oh, the, the other point that you all just discussed was, was eye-opening. You can, this is not a permanent set-in-stone permit that I'm asking for. Couldn't get it if I wanted it anyway. It's revocable. And, you know, your, your counsel, I forget her title, but anyway, she can bring it back to you should we not do what we say we're going to do. Or should we just let, you know, the, the thing run ramshod over there? They can come back in and revoke it at any time. So, you know, it's not like we're asking you to, you know, to give us a carte blanche over there.
Ma'am, do you have anything you'd like to add or say?
I don't think so. That I help him manage the other rental. And, you know, we're really pleased with... That I help him manage the other rental, and, you know, we're really pleased with the quality of people who come to rent here at the lake and have had no problems with them at all. They care for the properties as if it's their own.
Thank you.
The rental rate alone, you know, it's high because we're on the lake. It's a premium property. We want to maintain that. We live here as well. And so that rate lends itself to getting quality people. At least, all of our reviews have been five-star reviews, not a single complaint, and the people are very, very conscientious, and they are very respectful of the property.
Thank you. Anyone got any questions for Mr. and Ms. Walters?
Mr. Chairman, just a quick question. How frequently do you anticipate that to be rented, just the summer months, or do you have any feel for that? I'm just curious.
Well, that's an excellent question. I would love to be able to tell you it's going to rent 365 days out of the year because that's more cash flow for us, but that's not practical. You know, our other unit rents maybe two and a half months, maybe three at the most, and it has a much nicer location and view than this property does. So I would say to you, without trying to pull any wool over your eyes or anything, if it rents for the summer months, the warm months, and that would be maybe May, although this year wasn't so great in May, and I would say that would come to an abrupt end around Labor Day. So we're talking three, maybe three and a half months, give or take a little bit, and majority of the rentals are weekend rentals. They're not full weeks at a time. The property will be used far less going forward, should this be granted, than it has been used over the last 30 couple of years in the past.
Thank you.
But that's, that's an estimate.
I understand.
Anyone else, Ms. Smith?
Good evening, Mr. and Ms. Walters. Nice to have you with us. Just a question, given that you all have other short-term rentals.
Yes, ma'am.
What have been your experiences? I'm a big proponent of watching septic utilization, especially when these are lakefronts. So obviously with VDAH, you've got two people per bedroom. What has been your experience with extended family and all coming in and going 10, 12 people over what your permit is for septic load?
I think that's an obvious fear of everybody, you know, us and you and the opponents of this. And it's easy to think that. However, that's not been our experience. Now, do people try to pull the wool over our eyes and maybe sneak something else in there? It could happen, and I'm not here to tell you today that it won't happen, and it could. However, it's not something that we would like, because that's more water usage for us and more electric and more wear and tear on the property. And, I mean, I can give you an endless name of, endless list of names of people that could vouch for me. I'm pretty good at managing my properties.
Well, thank you, yeah, thank you for your candor. I appreciate that.
I can speak to that. The VRBO website allows me to send letters after a person has booked and then two days prior, and I always put in there that you are strictly held to the number of tenants, you know, that has been advertised, and they can be asked to be removed without a refund. So that encourages them to...
And it's immediate removal. It's not, well, catch you next time type of thing. And we're not going to tolerate it. It's our property. I mean, we paid a lot of money for it, and the last thing we want to do is pack, you know, 10, 20, 30 people in there. It's just not going to happen.
Thank you.
You bet.
Anyone else? Thank you, folks. Okay, with that being done, I'm going to open the public hearing. This will let folks come forward if you have anything to say. You'll be given a three-minute time limit to express your feelings and your thoughts. Madam Clerk, do you have anyone signed up?
Rodney Simpson.
Ronnie Simpson. You'll come forward, Mr. Simpson. Come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, my name is Rodney Simpson. I live at 140 Lookout Point, which is down the street. I'm speaking for the neighborhood, so I requested five minutes instead of three, seeing as I'm doing it for the entire neighborhood.
Is that, do you have anyone else signed up for that in the neighborhood?
Well, the sheriff's...
All right, well, sir?
I'm sorry. The sheriff's deputy said he talked to you...
Sir, I will grant your three minutes. I mean, your five minutes.
Pardon me?
You'll get your five minutes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. The community, basically, is full-time residents. There are 11 full-time residents on the property. We have one property that's being developed next year, we think, with one rental property now. 10 of the residents oppose this. We feel that it would be a detriment to the neighborhood. Half the residents are retired, and we don't want that in the property. The existing rental property has had three incidents that I know of when we've been there. We weren't aware we were supposed to call the sheriff. We are now. We talked to the property owner of the property and told her of the problems. One was a late-night party to 1:00. They've been parking a boat and trailer on the street, which is an issue with our road and against what you all require. So the whole neighborhood is generally opposed to it, and, oops, pardon me, streets around it are, I've talked to, they're not part of our neighborhood, but they don't really want it either in the neighborhood. I've done some research. I went through and looked at the Virginia State Code for short-term, single-family rentals by homeowner. Basically, Franklin County abides by most of these rules. I know you all can amend the rules, but you can't exceed the rules. The one issue that we have with the way the report was given on the septic field is that it is six adults. The state code does not look at that. State code says six occupancies over the years of three months. That precludes a whole gang of people being in this property. The septic system, as stated, was put in back in 94. The tanks are within 50 feet of the lake. The septic field itself is on the property, approximately 100 feet elevated, and overstressing that field will potentially cause an issue with sewage in Smith Mountain Lake if it overflows. I mean, there's no other place for it to go. Outside of that, the parking issue that you all address is one thing. Our utilities are underground, so there's a 15-foot setback from the road where all the utilities run, electric power and everything on the site. Our sewer lines, which are a pump-back field, go on those lines too. Now, the homeowners' association that ran for 21 years, we basically enforced with new people coming in to follow the rules, how they build their property and everything else, although we don't have a formal meeting. We do, with the association, pay the septic field taxes and everything as part of the homeowners thing. We collect money for that. Anyway, those lines that run underneath there are our responsibility, based on that. So if anything happens to them, we have to pay for those lines to be repaired. I'm not sure a rental property homeowner is going to be willing to dig up the road if it came to that, because the lines cross the street, basically, almost in front of his property. Though, again, parking vehicles on that land, and the land is pretty steep even coming off the road, but still parking in that 15 feet is a major issue for the homeowners in the area. It was mentioned the driveway is steep. The driveway is challenging, to say the least, and getting a boat down there on a trailer, you're going to end up in the house or end up in the lake trying to do it. So, again, people coming in and doing that and parking in the neighborhood, we're a cul-de-sac. I think it showed on your map that you looked at. There's enough room, there's literally not enough room for a car to park without blocking our mailboxes. The house that was just constructed, we had 15 trucks in the neighborhood at times. The mail lady wouldn't come for three, four days because she couldn't get in the neighborhood to give us some mail, and getting in and out was an issue. So people parking around the neighborhood is not what we want, and we've been told that that's an issue that we can report to the police and have that issue taken care The one other issue with the planning commission report, in their initial report, they indicated that they thought a barrier would be required or between the two properties because of the closeness of the properties. The existing homeowner didn't get a chance to speak to that, but they feel a barrier would be appropriate too, of some natural vegetation that would grow approximately eight to 10 feet tall. Their deck and the deck of the rental property are right in visual path, so we like the path...
I was up, sir.
You only gave me three minutes.
I gave you five minutes.
Okay, one last issue, one quick issue. It's only one thing, and this is on your paper, the way you indicate the homeowner on this property is an LLC.
Thank you, sir.
LLC is a corporation, and it's not a private homeowner. It's a, it's a commercial property.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, do you have anyone else signed up?
No, sir.
Is there anyone else here wishes to speak to this that does not live on Lookout Point? He took your time. Anyone else here? You live on Lookout Point, sir?
I do. I have one minute.
Come forward, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
State your name and address.
Greg Mulch in 145 Lookout Point.
He's just speaking to the mic, sir.
Gotcha. I'd just like to go with the fact that in the background of the property, it states it's a steep driveway. Pictures of it show it's an extremely steep driveway. The property is in an LLC. It is not safe to back a trailer down this driveway. You are inviting legal liability that it's not necessary with the special use permit. I did talk to many of you, many of you, and asked you to please view the property in person and determine for yourself if you feel you can safely back a trailer down there and there is no other place to park a trailer. I feel it is a legal liability issue that the county does not need to accept.
Thank you, sir.
That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Anyone else here wishes to speak to this project? Seeing none, wishing to speak? Sir, did you have something else to say?
Yes, I'd like to, but some of the things that they...
Come forward.
The first gentleman said that I would be parking boats either on the street, I'm not sure I understood him, or off the street on the grass. And that is not going to happen. We love that grass. We paid to have that grass taken care of, and we're not going to have any off-street parking there. And on the circle, I don't know if it was misunderstood that maybe those were my vehicles that were parked on that circle, but that was a house they were building two houses down. They were not mine. The septic is pumped every five years, and your records say six adults. And then, the gentleman that just spoke and the one before him said it's impossible, impossible, to get a trailer down there. First of all, our renters don't have trailers. Very few renters come with that much luggage. They don't come with a boat. Anybody that wants a boat at any of our properties, they need to rent a boat or put it in at one of the public landings, not at our properties. We don't have a launch there to put the boat in. So that's not going to be an issue. And I have on my phone pictures taken just three weeks ago. Donated some of the property that was left in the house, refrigerators, that type of thing, and the gentleman did back down the driveway with a long trailer. I have the pictures. If you want me to find them, I'd be happy to find them for you. Not only that, the previous owner moved out, and they moved, they pulled a large moving van down the driveway and loaded all of his furniture. They certainly did not carry it up to the street. The septic pumping truck, which is very large, backed down the driveway. The gentleman that did live there was 83 years old, 82, 83, right in that range. He's lived there for 30 years, and I inquired about the driveway. Has the driveway been an issue for you and your wife all these years? Not at all. He said, "Once you get used to it, go down one or two or three times, you're fine." And I found the same thing. First time I saw the driveway, I thought, wow, this is a steep driveway. Then I went down it a few times. I've been down it backwards. I've been down it forward. I've had a trailer down there myself. It's not an issue, and I disagree with that gentleman. As far as the barrier is concerned, there was mention of that. And at Smith Mountain Lake, the whole reason for living close to the lake, and people get as close as they can because they enjoy the view, it's a spectacular view. Why would I want to be a neighbor that comes in and plants a hedge? I think he just said eight or 10 feet tall, and then he said that would, that would be directly in line with our balconies. Well, he's wrong there, and we have pictures, and I can show you. The balcony that he's referring to is about 10 feet in the air to begin with. So that hedge, in order to block or screen between their balcony and our balcony, has to be at least 10 feet tall. If I do that, you know, I'm not going to be a fan over there, because I block their view of the lake looking that direction, and then that will block our view looking at the lake. And so it just, it's not practical. For another reason, and that the septic people can't get back there to pump their septic tank and our septic tank. And also the lawn mowing people, the same lawn mowing people do the neighbor's yard as does our yard, and that's exactly how they get down there, and they go across from yard to yard. And then he mentioned something about the septics being across the street and going right across our property. Our property is self-contained. We have the tanks where the county allowed them. They were put in properly. They've been there for, you know, 30 years, and it's a pump-back system to the front yard. The tank is directly right behind the house. I have a picture of that if anybody's interested. And then our lines are on our property. If his lines or other people's lines come in that 15-foot right-of-way, that's fine. I don't have anything to say about that. That was done long ago. And then cross the street right there, why should I be penalized for that? Plus, we're not going to park there anyway. We don't want anybody parking on the grass. It is, it is an eyesore to do that, and none of our properties does anybody park on the grass. I'm staunchly against that. Let's see. And then he did mention the homeowners' association ran for 21 years, so that cleared that up for us. I think that's about it. Did you have something?
There's already a tree in that vicinity.
Yeah, there are two trees as a buffer. If you want me to give this to you or...
You can pass it to the clerk. She'll see that we get it.
Okay. We have another.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, we have two of them. We might as well give them to you, because we have them on the computer. And like the gentleman requested, he wishes you would come out there and take a look at the property, and I'm going to save you a little bit of trouble. And we have pictures of it. Or you're welcome to come out. I mean, I'm fine with that, too. But anyway, you're welcome anytime to take a look at it.
Thank you, sir.
You bet.
Anyone else here wishing to speak to the property at Lookout? You live on Lookout Point, sir? I knew that was going to happen. I knew it was going to happen when I did this. You can have your minute too, sir.
My name's Dean Martin. I'm right next door, 124 Lookout Point. It's simple math here, okay? There's 13 residents in this little cul-de-sac. 10 people have opposed it. You have one runner already there, and then Mr. Walters, and one abstained. Okay, majority does rule here, I hope. So just think about it, okay? That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing, go back into board session. All right, Ms. Smith, you said you wanted to have some time. I'll open it up to the board for you and other members if you want to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just going to cut to the chase. I would like to table this application. Primarily, there are some things that, obviously, we're learning that there are documents provided that we didn't get. And also, I want, knowing that our staff is convening with other localities with regard to... to stray electricity around docks, and I've worked on this issue on and off for three or four years, but knowing that our staff is working on that, and it's a work in progress, I am not happy with trying to place a condition yes or no on a special use permit, given that we, as a county, have not opined on that issue in a formal sense. I also would like to do some more research and give further consideration to having two short-term rentals that are different in terms of potential use in a small, geographically condensed area. One's got a dock, one doesn't. And while I appreciate all of the comments that Mr. Walters has made about parking on site, I can tell you when we have rented houses here before we moved here, we always came with a trailer and a boat, and that trailer was always parked at the house that we rented. Now, of course, we've got regulations that stipulate that those trailers are supposed to be maintained and parked on your property, and I have tremendous respect for the fact that you want to maintain your, your lawn. I get that. I, I am concerned without doing some more research about how boats and trailers are going to be managed in that cul-de-sac area without encroaching on the, the state right-of-way in there that could potentially block other things going on. But I'm not comfortable, Mr. Chairman, and I, I'm prepared to make a motion to the board, but I would like to table it, especially as it pertains to the electrical, the stray electricity on the dock, because it is not cut and dried, I can assure you. And a test here and a test there does not close the door and make it a yes-no situation. And I think there perhaps could be some mitigations that the staff may end up opining on that we need to consider if we're going to place those types of conditions on short-term rentals that have docks.
Okay. Mr. Tatum?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the invitation to come down and see the property. I will tell you this, I went down there and looked at it myself, rode down there, and that driveway is very steep, and, and the lot is very small. I have some concerns, and those of you that know me know that I'm typically, I'm in a no-zoned area. My, my district is non-zoned, so we don't have issues with this. But, and I'm typically, if it's your property, you do, you do what you want to with it. But I have some issues, and I would support Ms. Smith's motion if she decides to make that a motion to table this. I, I have some questions I'd like to get answered, and pertaining to the dock, I'd like to see some ideas. The close proximity of the property really is what jumped out at me, maybe a berry or some, some shrubbery or something there. It wouldn't have to be ten or twelve feet high to block the, the balconies, but just something along the property line, you know, six, eight feet, whatever, but I'd like to see some of that considered here. But I just, I just have some concerns.
Anyone else have any questions or comments?
I got a question. I guess maybe Jim, as far as one of...
And if we need to go into closed session for consultation with the attorney?
Okay.
We have that in our, we have that in our rules. That, uh, we, we may, and I mean, that, that's fine. We can go in closed session for a consultation with the attorney because he's our attorney.
We're going back in.
All right, we'll do that. We'll do it. Mr. Queens?
Okay. I, I just had a couple of comments. So ahead of this session, I asked, well, one of the calls I received was about whether the fact that this is owned by an LLC should impact our decision. I talked to Jim about that ahead of time, and he said it shouldn't. So that was something that I wanted to learn.
That it should or should not?
Shouldn't not. It's, the, the fact that this property is owned by an LLC should not impact our decision. The second thing I wanted to say is it really, the fact that we have another short-term rental on the same street is a heavy precedent in my mind. And then the third comment is that I think if we do approve it at some point, we should make a condition that there are no trailers because they can't park a trailer on the street, and they can't take one safely down the driveway. So I think we could add an additional condition. And then the last comment is if we table it, I think that we should make it for a finite period of time in fairness to the owner and the community, rather than just leave it open-ended, we should table it with a date. So that's it. Thank you.
That would be my question, Lori. How long you want it? I mean, if we're going to wait, we, how long you want to table it?
I certainly don't want to prejudice the applicant and owner. I know that we're not going to be able to turn this around by Thursday when we reconvene here. So what we would typically do is bring it to the next Board of Supervisors meeting, which is going to be four weeks out approximately. So that would be the normal turnaround time.
Right.
And if the board feels, if you all feel that you want to, to gather to consider this before then, that's, would be your prerogative. But for me, I think it would be adequate for us to consult with staff and the county attorney over a period of a month.
I don't feel that we'll have any different information as far as the elec, electricity on the dock in between now and next month's meeting, though. Do you?
I think it's possible.
All right, we, we're going to close session. Mr. Tatum, will you read the statement, please, for the motion?
Mr. Chairman, uh...
Excuse, excuse.
Okay.
One comment for you all that's electrical. National Electric...
Sir, you're out of order. The, the, it's, it's already been, it's already been closed, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me. For Dan answered my question, okay?
Okay.
So I'm good.
We don't need to go into closed session then?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, so that takes care of that, then. That's good. The only, the only thing that I will add to going into for, and I'm not opposed to waiting until next month to hear that, I think we had, need to have a specific list of questions to give to staff to look into, to include the parking, the electric, and I think that's what everybody's talking about. So if you make that motion, or if somebody makes that motion, we need to include that in, that list into it, or at least until a specific timeframe to have those questions in for staff to answer and to also give to Mr. Walters. All right, Mr. Carter?
As far as the electric, I think Mr. Walters answered that.
I think so, too.
He said he had it checked. Is that correct? Am I...
That is absolutely correct, and the planning commission has all that information. It was on the screen the last time, and they made the announcement that the electric company was out there, tested it with the dock up, the dock down. There are so many irrigation systems around the lake, and information is going to be coming out in the future with many ways for electricity to get to a lake. As far as my property is concerned, and that's what we're concerned with tonight, I did have it tested, and I paid the bill, and it's a Red Bull Electrical Company. I, I don't have the information with me right here, but you all have a letter from the owner of the electric company with my bill, copy of my bill, stating that it was tested with the lift up and the lift down. The reason that gentleman was electrocuted a couple of weeks ago was because the lift was in the water, and he made it wrong by grabbing a hold of the lift. That's most unfortunate. It's a terrible accident. We do not encourage boats there. If people walk through it, then they can, but they're not going to be bringing and parking on the street, off the street, on our properties. And if you ask me how I will maintain that, I have two trucks. I will go over, and I will live it myself. Promise.
I think for myself, before I vote to table this, I want to see what we're tabling for a list or questions or whatever.
Ms. Cooper, if you'll come. Do you have that?
I, I do. I am, I do apologize. We do have that letter. How it did not get into your packet? I'm not sure. I'll find out tomorrow, but I do have a letter from an electrician. His company, he is licensed, he is certified, and they did do the test. And I do have a copy of the letter, which if you do table it, obviously, I will have it for you. And that I could definitely have to you by Thursday.
Is it certified?
Yeah, my understanding has been, and it's, and it's rooted in research and some of the work that, that some of our fire, fire personnel have done, you can do a test with the cradle in and out of the water, and you can get a, a non-electrical signal that says there's no electricity in the water when the cradle's in there. But it's very, it is very sporadic, and I, I don't know how anybody could stand by and say you don't have stray electricity with the cradle. It might have just been at that moment, but everything that I know has, has come to the, to the end result that it's variable, and you'd have to have a meter. And maybe that's where we need to have, to have a meter in the water to detect stray electricity. So there's just, the jury is out on that.
Are we going to put those meters all over the lake?
No, I'm just saying that, to me, for everything that I have been educated on tells, has instructed me that that's about the only way, and, and not keeping those cradles in the water when people are swimming in the water or around the dock in the water, as he was saying, to touch that cradle. You touch the cradle, and it's in the water, you're in trouble.
The cradle you're talking about is the, the rack that the boat sits on?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And, you know, so I know that it's top of mind for all of us, and I was frankly surprised that the planning commission put a condition in their recommendation on this because, and I know staff's looking at it, so I just don't know how far we, as a board, want to go down the road of approving a condition that, to me, our staff's not even opined on from a formal sense. That worries me.
Is there any other concerns than the electric?
Mm-hmm.
That we're concerned about?
I'm concerned with the issues Mr. Tatum is with regard to the added traffic in this small geographic neighborhood with a cul-de-sac and the activity. The staff report says that, that the noise and the traffic generated should not be more than that of a normal residential property owner, and I beg to differ with that because, gentlemen, just think about it. People are coming down to rent the house for vacation. The noise is going to be there. The transancy is going to be there, and there's going to be people coming and going out of that property all week long or two weeks or however long it is. That is over and above residential use. So I don't think the staff report is clearly articulating those differences appropriately, but I'm concerned with the things Mr. Tatum's concerned with. And you know what? At the end of the day, my constituents, they don't want this, and they don't want it because of the information that they've shared. I have found that they are not being arbitrary in their thinking. We've heard arbitrary before. But when I, I have been out to this site, and for me, I'm not sure where I am on this issue with it being in my district and knowing how many short-term rentals have come before our board. They're very difficult in an A1 district lot, very difficult.
I mean, we've had this discussion numerous times.
Yeah.
I have to go along with it. I mean, I haven't changed my mind at all. It's my property. I bought and paid for it. I'm going to do what I want to with it. I'm paying taxes on it, and it's, Virginia's a buyer B wire. You need to, what's going on? And I asked that question that Mr. Carter asked, is there any homeowner association rules and regulations? I think if you sign a paper stating you're going to abide by this, you're bound to that. But other than that, it's your property. And so I think probably, just to answer your question, Mr. Walters, I suppose probably everybody on the board's been out to that property because I know everybody does their due diligence and rides around and knows exactly where it's at and what it looks like, and it's not uncommon. It's not uncommon at all for this board to go out and look at these properties because that's just the type of board you got. And so with that being said, uh...
Can I make one comment about the electric? It's, it's fresh information, and it's going to be in newspapers, you should...
Go ahead, sir. It's your property. I'll, I'll give you some leeway.
I talked to Bill Nissen.
You need to come back up here, sir. We can't hear you.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I thought my voice was loud enough, but...
I talked to Bill Nissen this weekend. He's the owner of Dock Solutions. We talked about this catastrophe that happened the other day, and he said there is no one-hundred percent way to guard against what happened. He said the only way is to keep your dock, I mean, keep your cradle out of the water, and that way you won't, the person grabbing a hold of it won't make that continuity between the ground and the water. And he said, but there is the next best thing, and that is a light. It's a large light that you attach on one of the pilings of your dock where it's obvious to everybody, and it could have a horn on it if you wanted to. And the terminus is in the water. That will pick up any electricity, and it will come on instantaneous. And as I said earlier, there are many, many areas, irrigation systems, there are many, many faults around the lake. Do we all stay out of the lake? Do we all, you know? No, we don't do that. We take appropriate measures, like what Mr. Nissen, Dock, owner of Dock Solutions, and I could have had him here tonight, but I didn't think it would be necessary since we had already had it tested. But to answer your worry that it could be an intermittent problem, and it could. And I was told when, when I had to get this test done a month and a half ago, I asked the electrician, I said, does this ever happen? Is this a real thing? He said, well, it's very, very rare, and it's usually an infant that is in the water that gets electrocuted. Now we have this, I think, eighteen-year-old young man from Colorado, so we have more information, but there's more coming all the time. But I mentioned to Mr. Nissen that same day, the very same day, I said, Mr. Nissen, we have four properties. I want you ASAP to put that on all four of our properties.
Is it? Thank you, sir. Is it not common? I'm asking because I don't have property on the lake, but is it not common when you put your boat in the water to leave that boat cradle in the water? You don't, you don't, you don't...
We do.
You don't pick it up, do you? Take it out?
We don't.
So how you going to fix that?
Well, and that's something I think our staff and the board's going to have to, we're challenged with it because we're top of mind with an eighteen-year-old losing his life two weeks ago. And so, you know, I think it's, it's as much a legal discussion as anything else to decide what should locality and elected boards, what are the parameters for us to look at in terms of planning commissions and elected boards putting parameters on things like short-term rentals where docks are involved and the potential of stray electricity? How far does our prerogative and authority go to grant permissions with or without those considerations? And those are some of the questions I had, and I don't know if we will know the answer to that in a month, and I don't even know if it's appropriate for us to litigate an issue based on that. I have no clue. I, as I said, I was surprised the planning commission went there.
If we go back to the building department, I mean, they're going to follow the National Electric Code.
I under...
It's going to go there, so.
Yeah.
It, the building official can go beyond what's in the electrical code. So in my opinion, that's where you'd have to start, but you're talking about just on rental units, it's every house down there that's got a dock.
Right.
It ain't, you're not going to clear it up.
Right.
Not just using this as an excuse or a, a SUP for a rental unit.
And Mr. Walters, I was unaware that you were taking measures on your four properties with the light.
I didn't mention it because I didn't feel appropriate at the time.
I applaud you for that proactive measure.
You're welcome to call Bill Nissen and ask if we didn't have that conversation.
That's okay.
Mr. Jameson, I know that, well, you're Jameson Electric, so that...
Close.
I forgot we had a plan.
Actually, we get that in there.
Get that in there. I mean, you're Jameson Electric. Is that Mr. Walters was talking about, that this other gentleman? Is that one of the fixes for this?
I do not know him.
You're not familiar with that?
That's a good idea, though. I mean, you can use a voltage, pick it up, very simple. I mean, it's a warning, you know? It's, it's a safety precaution. But there again, are we going to force that and force it? It's still, in my opinion, it's going to have to go back through the building.
It's got to go back to, to the Commonwealth of Virginia. Not for, I think, well, I guess we could do it here. Our rules can be greater than, but not less than the state. Our rules can be greater than, but not less than the state.
Well, right now, the building code is gonna go back to the National Electric Code.
Yes.
And like I said, that's what's required at this point. When it goes out and inspects a place, if it meets the code, National Electric Code, he's gonna turn it loose unless, like I said, he's got the prerogative to. He's got the last say. He can go over and above the electrical code, the way I understand.
Yes, sir. Anybody else? All right, I guess it's open now to entertain a motion. Anybody got, anybody got a motion? All right, Mr. Mitchell?
I find that the use will not be of substantial detriment to adjacent properties, that the character of the zoning district will not be changed thereby, and that such use will be in harmony with the uses permitted by right in the zoning district, and with the public health, safety, and general welfare to the community. Therefore, I move to recommend approval of the applicant's request for a special use permit to allow for public utilities on property with the three conditions as recommended by the planning commission.
All right, you got a second?
Could I offer an amendment? I had mentioned not allowing trailers. Could I add that as another condition? Or what do I have to do to add?
That's up to you, Mitch, it's his motion.
You can offer a friendly amendment.
So Nick, could I, could I offer that as another condition? Where you couldn't bring trailers down?
I think I like it the way it is.
All right, we got, he's made a motion. Do I have a second?
I'm sorry, can we, can we get clarification? Did you say three conditions?
Yes, three conditions as recommended by the planning commission.
Should be eight.
There are eight.
There are eight, if you're reading what's in the book. Page four of number 11.
Yeah, eight conditions.
Eight, eight conditions as recommended by the planning commission.
Have we got a second?
A second.
Madam Clerk, we do a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Smith?
No.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
No.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you. All right, moving forward. John William Dansby, special use permit, attachment 12 in your book. Uh, let's go.
Yes, thank you. This is your last public hearing for the evening. The application is for River Street Communications of Virginia, Inc. Doug Cox is the applicant, and Mr. Dansby is the owner of the property. They're requesting a special use permit with conditions on 39.22 acres zoned agricultural. The property is located at 4481 Colonial Turnpike in the Union Hall Election District. The purpose of this special use permit is to allow public utilities. The property has a future land use designation of agricultural forestry rural residential. This particular piece of property, the special use permit, we're only talking about 2,500 square feet of the 39.22 acres. You will also notice that this property also has fronts on Doe Run Road. It's a corner lot. The proposed structure will be unmanned. It will be single-story, about 240 square feet of a concrete building that is about 12 by 20, finished with exposed rock. This will be housing, network, equipment, and fiber optic cables necessary for broadband internet services for the surrounding community. The applicant put in the letter of application that they will use a finished, a natural rock finish to try to blend with the surrounding area. The structure will require an electrical and mechanical system, but no plumbing. Housing this network, it has to do, and Mr. Cox is here, and he can explain it better than me. The shelter will have fiber optic table to supply to an FTP network. Basically, what the shelter is trying to do is to sync up with another network so that they can get service to the Glade Hill and Snow Creek communities to allow for broadband internet to members of these communities that are underserved. Staff received, prior to the planning commission public hearing, we received two phone calls, one email, and one walk-in. And basically, what they were requiring, what they were inquiring about was the public hearing notice sign that was posted on the property. This is a location, a vicinity map of where, if approved, this structure will be. This is the property. And I think Mr. Cox has some diagrams of what it's definitely going to look like. But it's gonna be somewhere in this area, the structure, where it will be built, and the leased area. As I said, the future land use is agricultural forestry rural residential. That is all of the surrounding property. The property is zoned A1, and as most of you know, most of this area is zoned A1. These are some pictures that we took. I think the planner is standing on Doe Run Road, looking up to the property. So it'll probably be located somewhere in this area. Just another view showing the house and the structures that are already on the property. Basically, keep in mind, again, for zoning purposes of Section 25638 when you're granting the special use permit, is it, will it be in substantial, will it, will it have substantial detriment to adjacent properties? Will it be in character with the zoning district, which is A1? And will it be in harmony with the purpose and the intent of the A1 district? And the uses that are permitted in the zoning district? As you are all aware, the county does have a broadband plan and does identify Glade Hill and Snow Creek as areas that do need access to internet service. And this particular structure will help provide that to businesses and residents. The structure is comparable to sizes to other buildings in the area. It will only be 2,500 square feet of leased area. The property is residential with portions of the property used as farmland and agricultural. The traffic generated by this public utility will be minimal because it is unmanned. In addition, the noise of the public utility should also be minimal. Given this location of the property, the nature, objective of this request, planning commission concluded that the proposed special use would be inconsistent with the comprehensive plan and would not be substantial detriment to adjoining properties and not change the character of the zoning district. The planning commission did hold their public hearing. They did put three conditions. That the proposed use would be in substantial conformance to the conceptual plan that was submitted with the application, and it was dated May 3, 2024, prepared by Rivertree. The Virginia Department of Transportation shall approve all permits required authorizing prior to final site plan review. And a site plan will be required by the planning office for review and approval. It was a 6-0 vote with one member being absent. I think one member was absent. And I would be happy to answer any questions. And I think the applicant has a brief presentation.
Has anyone here got any questions for Ms. Cooper?
Ma'am, Mr. Chair, thank you. Lisa, I see in the planning commission notes that fencing came up, and that it was the intention of River Street to put fencing up comparable and very similar to what the owner puts up, so there's consistency there. And just for the board's information, I'm willing to introduce an additional condition, if Ms. Cooper, if you find that that's necessary or warranted.
What, basically, at the, and Mr. Cox will explain, the fencing that was, the person that he's leasing it from wanted to help contain, I think it was his dog. And I had looked at the site plan incorrectly. I thought there was gonna be fencing along the front. And it was another line on the conceptual plan. And Mr. Cox will go into more detail. They want it to be open there. They don't feel like, they don't want it to be completely enclosed. They have buildings like this and have not had vandalism done to the buildings. So they're, they don't see a need for it to be enclosed, unless you all would. And that was my fault of looking at the site plan incorrectly.
And the only other question I have, Lisa, I'm just curious. This is not anything that I think we have prerogative over. But are these facilities usually secured in some way? Given the nature of what they're there for?
I think some of them are. I know one of them that we had recently here on, it was another company on Booker T, Route 122, right out of the village of Burnt Chimney. That one is fully enclosed. There are some tree plantings to kind of screen it, because it is kind of close to the road. That one's secure. But I would say not all of them are fenced in that you see around. The gentleman, Mr. Cox, may be able to answer that. I got the impression that they don't fence theirs unless required.
But the security piece is what I was asking.
Right, right.
Okay, okay. I'm talking about some type of security, not fencing.
Not fencing, I think there is lighting on the building.
I'm sure he can, yeah, I just was curious if it can...
Yeah, and I'm sorry.
No, and I would just...
But some people do use a fence for security purposes.
Of course, of course. And I would just remind the board, this is, as Ms. Cooper said, this has been part of our rollout and partnership to get internet access to Lake Creek and Glade Hill, I believe. But this is, River Street's one of our partners, and we've contractually agreed through the broadband authority to get this service provision in place. And I'm very proud that we've got this available to serve our citizens.
And Lori, I would add, as long as the property owners are happy, the people riding by will just be happy for the internet, regardless of what type of fence there is.
I couldn't agree more.
Ms. Cooper, is this, you know, the new building there in Burnt Chimney just passed home state cream on the left?
Yes.
It's very similar to that, isn't it?
Yes, it is. It's very similar to that.
Thank you. All right, is the homeowner, property owner here, or?
The applicant is here.
Mr. Cox, the applicant? Please come forth. State your name and address, please, for the record. And in this case, your business.
Oh, let me get Alice. Where's the exit? I'm blind, I can't see. It's this one? Okay, today's not my day. I'm challenged. Come on. Okay. I must not have, there we go. I must, I wasn't clicking in the right place. No, don't let me get up here with electronics.
Sir, good evening. My name is Doug Cox, I'm with River Street Networks. Our headquarters is located at 1400 River Street, and that's in Wilkesboro, North Carolina. As she mentioned earlier, going into this presentation, just some, I guess, some, as she mentioned earlier, it's 12 by 20, 240 square feet. The building's single-story, nine feet, 10 inches tall. The walls are finished with an exposed river rock aggregate. The purpose of that is try to give it a more natural look to blend with the natural surroundings. It is a gravel entrance, low volume, private entrance, as the V-Doc classifies them. And then it's expected that there'll be less than one vehicle per day. It will be unstaffed. It does require a standard power service. The building houses the network equipment with fiber, and terminates the fiber optic cables. This will provide wireline, broadband internet services to the surrounding community. And then the building will offer essential internet services to the surrounding community as well. Here is the site plan. So we've got Doe Run Road. This is actually the southwest corner of the property. It's approximately 0.16 miles to the intersection, so it's at the far extents of the property. The existing wire fence, I'll try to follow the... So this is the existing wire fence now along the property. So as she stated earlier, the homeowners would like to keep the fence, I guess contiguous and continuous, to keep his dog in. So what we have agreed is basically to intercept the fence and then fence off our portion in entirety from his. This line here is the example of the lot, the 2,500 leased premise. So that's 50 foot by 50 foot. So that boulder line, the actual new fence is indicative of this thin red line with the circles. So that will hopefully help clarify that issue with the fencing. The door would be right here. This would be a gravel parking area, and we would access this from Doe Run Road. Here is a black and white, hopefully. This fence, again, stands out a little more on this. Like I said, it's the red line with the circles. And that's just, we would have the fence match his existing fence. Here is the site survey. Just basically showing that same generalized area. Here's the proposed service area for this specific building. And then I have a closer view, so you can kind of see the areas where this building would service. Here are a couple examples of what they would look like. And that's all I have. Do we have any questions?
You got, anybody got any questions for Mr. Cox? Thank you, sir.
Thank you all, I appreciate your time.
All right, I'm gonna open the public comments. Madam Clerk, you got anybody signed up?
No speakers for this one.
We got anybody here wishing to speak to this project on Doe Run Road? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Go back into board, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer a motion.
Please.
I find that the use will not be of substantial detriment to adjacent properties, that the character of the zoning district will not be changed thereby, and that such use will be in harmony with uses permitted by right in the zoning district, and with the public health, safety, and general welfare to the community. Therefore, I move to recommend approval of the applicant's request for a special use permit to allow for public utilities on property with the three conditions as recommended by the planning commission.
So if I'm looking at this right, number 12. 12, I think we're reading the same thing, if I'm looking at this right. In mine, did you read that off page six?
Yeah, I think, I think that, I think they got reversed, yeah. I think they're in the wrong order. No, you read the correct one. Yes, you read the correct one.
I thought you said three conditions, I missed five conditions.
I said three and not eight earlier, mine was mixed up, too.
Okay, do I get a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, we do a roll call vote.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes.
All right, we'll save other matters and everything till we come back from closed session. We're going into our public comment now. It's, we've reached the time, set aside in our meeting for public comment. Public comment gives citizens an opportunity to address the board in person or in writing on matters appropriate to the responsibility of the board. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes for their comments. Speakers must direct all comments to the board as a whole and not to individual board members or employees of the board of the county. Personal attacks or insults, profane or vulgar language will not be tolerated. Likewise, commentary on issues that are not within the purview of the board and are not a function of the local government and over which we... and are not a function of the local government and over which we have no control are not acceptable. Public comment is not a question and answer session, and board members will not answer questions during the public comment. If a speaker violates these rules, the chairman may rule the speaker out of order and upon second violation have the speaker removed from the podium. Madam Clerk, please call the first speaker.
Rebecca Saunders? I think she left. Okay. Um, Emily.
Rebecca Saunders?
Emily Blinkenship?
She left.
Catherine Champray?
I don't know her, but I think she left too.
We might can do this easier. Anybody here wishing to come forth and present to the board?
We've got two.
Sir, come forth, state your name and address, please.
My name is Earl Lawrence, uh, seven twenty-four Chestnut Mount. I would, uh, encourage you to do anything that would improve my telephone and internet service in that area. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. We're trying. Gentleman in the back, I know who he is.
Keith Johnson?
Uh, as you know, my name's Keith Johnson. Live at one ninety Leaning Oak Road in Boons Mill. I'm here to talk about, uh, our school system. As you know, last October, I challenged fourteen books in the high school library uh, because the content was racist sexist sexist and/or sexually explicit pornography. A few week, that was in October. A few weeks ago, school administration provided a few details to the media about these books. According to the newspaper, five books were removed because they were not checked out for several years. Two were placed in a youth restricted section and seven were returned to the shelves for students to peruse. There was no explanation for why they restricted two books or returned seven pornographic books to the shelves. They also did not tell us the titles of these books, which ones were done different ways. Uh, you may remember the flyer I gave you with four racist and sexually explicit titles from the high school library. Only one of these titles has been removed. Three are still available to students as of July tenth of this year. The updated flyer is included in your handout. At the school board meeting on, uh, July eighth, they authorized the library committee to survey parents about school library policies. The person, the board person in charge of the library committee in a loud voice insisted Franklin County schools do not have pornography in the schools. This made me question the results of a school survey managed and controlled by a person that consistently denies an obvious truth. I request the board of supervisors authorize their own survey of all Franklin County taxpayers on pertinent issues you may have about county issues, but also include at least one question on whether or not they want taxpayer funds used to fund racist and sexually explicit pornography in our schools. I have no idea what this will cost, but I pledge a thousand dollars to help pay for it. In the legal evaluation of the school board activity, I include in your handout select Virginia codes related to providing juveniles pornography. I highlighted pertinent areas in the code where a survey would be particularly helpful to identify, quote, "standards of the adult community as a whole with respect to what is suitable material for juveniles," unquote. That's section, uh, eighteen two three ninety. In your handout, I also included a list of, uh, nineteen books I found in a high school library that had already been removed from other schools in the state. At least two, but no more than four other school districts have removed these books. So I provided that each of these books, I'm sorry, are in violation of the, uh, school policy for explicit content. The board was provided this list February twelfth of this year. Eighteen of these nineteen books are still available to students as of July eighth of this year. One has been placed in a youth restricted category. The school has not provided, has provided no information about their investigation into this complaint. School administration continues their lack of transparency. The Franklin County community is not included in the school's evaluations of these processes.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anyone else here wish to, uh, address the board? Anyone at all? All right, thank you, seeing no more that wish to address the board. Uh, Mr. Tatum, if you will, we'll go back into a closed session so that we can clear up some county staff and then we'll come back and finish our business. Uh, Mr. Quinn has a presentation and we've got to do board appointments.
All right. Mr. Chairman, the Franklin County Board of Supervisors will motion to enter into a closed meeting in accordance to two point two dash thirty-seven eleven, A-one Personnel Discussion of Appointments to County Boards, Commissions, and et cetera. A-three Discussion of the Acquisition of Real Property or the Disposition of Real Property. A-five Discussion Concerning a Perspective Business or Industry or the Expansion of an Existing Business or Industry. A-seven Consultation with Legal Counsel on Briefings by Staff About Litigation or Other Specific Matters requiring Legal Advice. A-twenty-nine Discussion of the Terms of a Public Contract of the Code of Virginia as Amended.
Got a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you roll call vote, please?
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. Let's go back in, uh, before we go back in.
Open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session to which this certification applies. And only such business matters as were identified in the motion by which this closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting to which this certification applies.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you roll call it?
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. Okay, folks, fresh in our mind, let's go to the board appointments. Uh, the first one is Dan River ASAP. Tom West, Tom Webster. Uh, what's your pleasure?
Make the motion we approve.
Give a second.
Second.
All in favor, signify, or do we have to do? Huh?
I made the motion.
He made the motion. Madam Clerk, we need to do a roll call or can we just do a? All in favor, signify, say an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Patrick Henry Community College, Brandon Scott?
He, he can't serve. We're gonna have to re.
We gotta get somebody for him. Okay. If you know anybody, uh, anybody that would be interested in being with the, uh, Patrick Henry Community College, I think it's Patrick and Henry now. That was politically incorrect, but, uh, if you know anybody there. I think we staff knows of someone that may be interested, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Before that one too. All right, Piedmont Community Services, uh, I'm gonna check in on to this one. I've asked, uh, staff to see if they. BW Wright, uh, you're gonna go by and check on him. Virginia Western Community College. Well, I'm not supposed to make any questions.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint Leslie Carter to the Virginia Western Advisory Board.
A second. A second.
All in favor, signify, say an aye?
Aye.
I'll call her tomorrow. I think, I think I told you that earlier. It was like five meetings a year. And then, I'll just touch this back. Uh, Madam Clerk, if you will, I would like, uh, I think the board will be in the branches.
They meet every month.
I'd like to do like an appreciation resolution on that. He served county, he's been in county forever. Owns Cooper Wood Products. I think it would be nice if we do a little recognition of his service, please. Everybody's okay with that, aren't you? And then the Agent Services, Gail Goode, we're not ready to.
She, she don't, she can't, and I haven't found a replacement yet.
All right, and then the run-up, Gallegany Regional, uh, Commission. It's been nominated to Steve Sandy taking, uh, Mr. Whitlow's place.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair, that we, that we appoint Steve Sandy, um, to replace Chris Whitlow on the run-up Gallegany Regional Commission.
Second.
All in favor, signify, say an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Surely they could be known.
Welcome aboard, Steve.
Next time you'll bring some lemonade, Steve.
I'll bring Chris later.
Next time you bring some lemonade, buddy. Okay, now we need to go back to where we left off. And here, here's where we, Mr. Quinn?
Yes, sir.
Where it's your, it was requested because of the time. It's entirely up to you, this be taken up Thursday.
Oh, that'd be fine.
Is that okay with you?
Yeah, it's fine.
Mr. Tatum's gotta go to work.
No, Thursday's fine.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you for that. So that takes care of that. All right, so then we'll go to, uh, Mr. Whitlow.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and in fact that Mr. Tatum has to go to work and so forth, um, several things, upcoming events. I'll try to be brief as I can. Um, the, uh, there will be a listening session, um, with, um, Raising the Shade, which is the initiative for the new, um, sculpture monument to be located within the Veterans Park here in Rocky Mount. Uh, and the group, um, is having the sculptor actually come to town, uh, next Thursday, July twenty-fifth. Um, there's a lunch at the, I believe it's the Rocky Mountain Burger Company at twelve-thirty. And of course, staff and the board is certainly invited, uh, to that just to get input and, and, and hear, um, uh, from, uh, the sculptor and the initiative there. And then also that evening at five-thirty, uh, I believe it's at the Harvester. I think they're having a listening session and so forth. And I know some of our staff has signed up to attend. I plan to attend the lunch, but I would certainly welcome any board member that may be interested in attending. We'll, we'll get that information out in the Friday packet. Mr. Anspa had, um, uh, emailed me earlier today just to remind, uh, the board of that. I'm looking, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, several things, um, in, in advance of Thursday. I know Thursday, we're gonna talk a little bit about, um, the legislative agenda, more on that on Thursday. But, um, the Etter, November meeting, November nineteenth meeting of the Board of Supervisors, we have, uh, sent out to the legislators, save the date, uh, for eleven-thirty for our legislative lunch. I'll just mention that and more on that on Thursday. Mr. Delegate Williams, you mentioned with his transportation.
He was invited because he is now a member of the transportation. I know he's not the representative for Franklin County anymore, but he is a member of the transportation. He was invited. And he did tell me he would be there.
He's pretty good about that.
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, just looking ahead, there are several, um, things, upcoming meetings and, and so forth. Last week, of course, uh, was the VACO meeting, um, and, um, uh, Mr. Chairman, I know you had a chance to attend and Mr. Carter, as Ms. Smith did, and I know there were some other meeting conflicts, uh, that, uh, day. But a really, really good meeting and more on that legislative agenda, like I said, more on that on Thursday. But the, uh, VACO conference will be coming up in November. Um, nothing has been posted yet. We'll get that information out to the board. In terms of upcoming board meetings, um, I, I know we have the work session here on Thursday. But then as we look ahead to August and September and October, really a lot of planning work, uh, that staff is, is really trying to put together for the board as we get ahead and as we start looking at the next year's budget, the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Um, part of that, uh, of course, uh, very important, I think, to the board now that we're past the current budget is to really pull back out our capital improvement plan. Uh, and I think this would be very instrumental, uh, for all of us to refamiliarize ourselves with that capital improvement plan, but certainly our new board members as well, um, as we'll be looking at county facilities. Um, we've mentioned the needs on the capital improvement plan, including the nine-one-one center, um, DSS offices, other things that are currently in that CIP. But then in addition, uh, Brandy has worked, uh, and has done a really, really good job of a roof analysis, um, for our county buildings and properties. And so, um, Brandy is working and will be working as well as staff, uh, coming up on our August twenty-second meeting. Uh, in addition, we'll likely have a broadband authority meeting on, um, August the, the twenty-second. We're still waiting to hear back from the governor on the VODI award, hopefully maybe sometime soon. Um, and in addition, I know there's been a lot of discussion regarding, um, public safety and apparatus and the facilities and so forth. Really taking a look comprehensively what that may look like, the needs. And it's not just the, the, the apparatus, but it is, um, our facilities. And it's not just county facilities. It's, it's, you know, some of the facilities that we know, uh, from the volunteer perspective. And so that, that's, um, April twenty-second specifically. And then perhaps either the evening of, not April twenty-second, I apologize, it's late, board, I'm sorry. Uh, August twenty-second, in the evening, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the board, the consultant for the zoning ordinance rewrite will be with us, uh, in August. And so we're, we're looking, depending on the evening, right now, there may just be one public hearing on August twentieth. That's your Tuesday meeting. If so, and time will accommodate, uh, we would likely, this will be part of that joint session with the planning commission as a kickoff with our zoning ordinance consultant. Uh, and so, um, there, there's just some things in August that's, I think, very important for us as a board. And then as we look to September, staff has been working with the financial advisor, Davenport and Company, uh, as opposed to, now that we take a look again at our capital improvement plan, there's several things in terms of our forecasting, CTE, other things. We know, um, funding apparatus and, and, um, David Rose has been very busy and, and, um, Brian Carter and I will be meeting with him actually next week on some options and so forth, some things that they're doing for other localities and so forth. And then also looking back, uh, it, it, ahead to October. But one thing specifically that we're looking at, uh, is for our strategic, um, planning retreat, Mr. Chairman, um, the board's retreat, retreat, for picking back up our strategic plan and reviewing our strategic plan from two or three years ago, um, using that session to really, um, work with staff in terms of setting priorities as we get into the budget, as we look, you know, are our strategic goals and objectives, are they still current? We heard from our economic development strategic plan today. Likely we could use that time also to look at that plan and just look in terms of alignment. And so we're looking at, of course, uh, the pleasure of the board. But I think the last time we briefly spoke about this, we, Mr. Chairman, I think it was noted that maybe we would try to start sometime in the morning, um, and then when we're all fresh and then maybe, um, bring in some lunch and, and try to work some through the early afternoon. Um, and looking at that, uh, we were looking at the possibility, and depending on schedules, um, Labor Day is earlier in the week, it's the Monday. Um, we've checked with staff schedules. I think staff is available the Friday following the Labor Day, but I'm sensitive also to the board and your travel schedules. But that could possibly be Friday, September the sixth, um, depending on board availability. And of course, we would find, um, and work location and, and have, um, lunch brought in. And it's something I think, Mr. Chairman, and speaking with you and our vice chairman, it may be, we're not necessarily, we'd bring in a consultant, but, you know, staff could try to help facilitate and, and review the previous strategic plan.
Time before, Steve had the whiteboard and slipped the papers over as we gave up. We don't have to pay nobody to do that, do we? What do y'all think? I don't think we have to pay nobody to do that. Y'all?
I didn't hear what you said, Ryan.
When we, when we have our board retreat, we don't need to bring somebody in to facilitate that. We can do that with staff. They, all we do is give our ideas, they write them down, and then we compile and get to it later. We don't need to pay somebody the money to do that.
I agree.
Chris, I would also add, the sixth, Marshall, I have a VACO class.
Okay, all right, so the sixth is out of the question then, um, for, uh, two of the supervisors. So, and we knew that week could be problematic. So then we'd be looking at possibly, and this would be the Friday, um, not, not that, the following Friday, which is Friday the thirteenth, uh.
It's gotta be on Friday.
Well, one thing specifically, it doesn't necessarily have to be on Friday, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we could look at, um, Thursday, the twelfth. Um, we were just looking at Fridays just because a lot of times staff meetings are, are busy or in the middle of the week. But we have looked at the twelfth and, and staff could, could try to make that work as well and would make that work.
I, I'm free on the sixth, but I'll be traveling that week, the whole week.
The ninth through the thirteenth?
Uh, the, uh, afternoon of the sixth through the ninth.
Through the ninth?
Well, if you couldn't.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, through, the afternoon of the sixth through the, uh, the sixteenth.
We're in October now?
Yeah, no, in September.
September.
Yeah.
September.
Oh, you said it didn't have to be a Friday. Chris, could we do it on like the fifth, the Thursday, the first week?
I could do that.
Yeah, we, we could do that.
The fourth or fifth?
Yeah.
Fourth or fifth, maybe.
Any, anytime except that second, third, fourth, fifth, or sixth, any one of those. Is that good?
The sixth, we can't because.
Because that's when y'all had to go down there. The second, third, or fourth.
I know typically there's a standing regional jail meeting the first Thursdays of the month, but there hasn't been any business in some time.
How about the second, third, or fourth?
The, the fourth or the fifth. The fifth could possibly work too, Mr. Chairman, if, if there's no other meeting.
But that's the Thursday week.
It is, but it currently.
Wednesday to the 4th.
How about the 4th, Wednesday to the 4th?
Yeah.
Does that work?
Okay, alright, great. We will, we will look at Wednesday, the 4th, and then we'll work on some details, Mr. Chairman, and get back to the board as to come to our thoughts and outline working with, with, with staff and leadership in terms of the agenda and the format, and get back to everyone.
The time, the time, 10 to 3 suit everybody? 10 to 3. We can have lunch brought in.
Are we going to do it offsite, or?
We, we, we could, and I, I think offsite works well, we, we've had them in other locations before, the Valley Star has a really nice conference room, Faram College has a nice conference room. We've used Boone's Mill, Mr. Uh...
Yeah, Mr. Up at, uh...
Frith.
At the Frith, Frith's got a nice place.
The 4H Center.
How much trouble though, I mean, I'm just asking the question. I mean, we got everything right here, it's a lot of trouble for staff to have to move all that stuff and get it, get it together, is it not? We got B-75, we can change things around, or use this room, I'm just saying, it just seems like a lot of work for staff to have to get stuff together.
The Glade Hill Fire Station is a nice place, I mean, it means more travel for everybody, I'm, I'm fine doing it here, but I'll just offer that up, it's free and it's nice.
It's a nice facility, it is. You know, Mr. Chairman, in terms of staff, you know, we would, we would make that work wherever, if it's Glade Hill Station, a good suggestion, Franklin Center.
Is the Franklin Center compatible with the electronics here? Can you just send everything over on the computer there?
It, it, it has the, it has the capabilities, the PowerPoint and so forth, I don't necessarily know if it has all the audiovisual capabilities.
It does in the multi-purpose.
In the multi-purpose room, yeah, that's right, yeah.
For me, for my vote, I'm just one vote, right here. Central, central located, and everything's right here, staff and central, that's just my vote, the rest, study for whatever, everybody gets a vote.
I'm good with here.
I'm fine here.
In, in terms of the format...
Just right here?
Right here or B-75, or?
Here or B-75, whichever is the most convenient.
Alright, alright, we will, we will look at that on Wednesday, September 4th, 10 to 3 for our session, strategic planning session, okay?
Chris, make it easy on yourself, whatever was...
Okay, alright, thank you, we always like to hear that, so. And then looking at November, December board meeting, I know I mentioned the VACO meetings started, I think it's November 10th through the 12th, or 12th through the 14th, we'll get information out for that. The November 19th meeting, that will be the legislative agenda day, will be coming in, the board will be coming in at 11:30 for that. There is likely time that we can start our meeting earlier at, you know, 1:30, if you will, on that day. In the past, I know other localities, Roanoke County and so forth, have combined their December and November meetings due to the holidays, and I know other localities have done so because of VACO specifically. And so if it's the pleasure of the board, you know, it, it, it could be where we can combine that meeting, or due to the holiday, advance our December meeting to, I believe, the second week of the month. We'll get information out to you, I wanted to throw that out to the board, I know some on staff will be traveling right before the holiday and will not be able to be here at the December meeting, we don't have to decide that this evening, I just wanted to go ahead and let the board start thinking through that. And, Mr. Chairman, other matters, I won't go through all the events coming up, there are several, we get that out in the Friday packet and so forth in terms of tourism events. There are a couple of things, and this can probably wait in the interest of time until Thursday, I'm going to leave the board with this today. It is OSHA, we've talked a little bit about the new OSHA regulations, that if they are approved, it's going to have a significant financial impact, particularly on volunteer fire EMS companies and localities. VACO was on top of this, VACO is very concerned about it. For us to respond back to the Department of Labor, we have until July 22nd, staff has drafted a response letter of our concerns. I'll pass this out, and if it's the board's pleasure, I don't necessarily think I need a vote this evening, just consensus from the board that we send this letter out before the July 22nd deadline. And, you know, if, if board wants to read through this now, or we can, we can come back, Mr. Chairman, on Thursday to do that.
Chris, do you have another copy?
One more.
One more, yes, yup, a couple more. And if you'd like more specifics from VACO, I'll pass this around as well, Mr. Chairman. This is something that VACO has jumped on top of, and as well as the National Association of Counties is starting to look at this as well. It, it essentially requires, it could be a host of requirements affecting both personnel from a training perspective, but from an operational perspective, new requirements for fire protection and so forth. And, and while it may have merits on, on its face, Mr. Chairman, you've often talked about unfunded mandates, this is one of the significant unfunded mandates that's coming down from the federal government, that I think if...
See where it's coming from too, don't you?
Uh, if approved, and I've had this conversation with Delegate Will Davis last week of concern, and, and he's offered whatever that he could do, but he knows this is a federal issue as well, so.
Mr. Whitlow, I can tell you, this is getting a lot of attention at VACO, being on the call with Chairman Bennett and so forth, this is, this is going to be large and in charge on our legislative agenda this fall.
So if there's no objection, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff could go ahead and file this letter with Department of Labor for comment, for our comments.
Everybody?
Yeah.
Everybody up there?
Okay.
Everybody shaking their head, yeah.
Alright, Mr. Chairman, and then finally, I would just add this evening, it's come to staff's attention, and maybe, you know, some of the board members, we, and I talked about maybe in August, we'll talk a little bit more about our capital improvement plan and our apparatus schedule and replacement. And I know there's a lot of discussion regarding apparatus every year regarding our CIP. We are at a point in our EMS fleet of, we're having some significant failures with some of our fleet, our EMS trucks. And while one truck is budgeted, a, a truck is budgeted for CIP that was approved in, in, in the, in the budget, another truck will be funded through the solar payment, if you will, for the solar facility that was approved, that money is there. So I'll have more detail, staff, I'll have more detail for you on Thursday, but staff is at a point where we're going to have to make some decisions in terms of ordering those vehicles. Again, one is budgeted, the other is, in a sense, budgeted for, with the solar payment from the other company, but really, we're really, we are really looking at potentially four vehicles, two, as I said, are kind of budgeted. The others are there, but it's, it's in future years because likely they would not be delivered until '26 in some cases. And so we'll have a little more detail, as I said, with Mr. David Rose coming up, on a way that we can have a more recurring schedule of purchasing these, as opposed to, let's hurry up and purchase, and it's more systematic. But we'll have some detail for the board, more detail on Thursday. We have rotated one, specifically, staff advised me, we have rotated one EMS truck that was not necessarily being utilized to its full potential in terms of call volume to really help us get by on an interim basis. And, Mr. Chairman, that, I think, is the majority of those things, and I apologize to Mr. Tatum for all of that.
Quinn, you have anything?
I do not.
Alright, then we'll go to Ted, please, your dad, you're okay with doing yours Thursday? Alright, well, well, we'll start with you with the other matters of my supervisors, you got anything?
I, I had a couple of things I wanted to bring up, so one is the, it's called the preliminary... The preliminary information form application that had to be made to the Virginia Department of Historic Resources for the Union Hall Baptist Church. The board at the last meeting gave the county approval to sign this application, the application was submitted, and last week it was approved. And so that, all, all it does is it now enables this building and the land to get grant funding. It was a little close in the end because they went out and did a site visit, and they said that, this is just for everybody's knowledge, grants cannot be used for, in their words, reconstruction, that's where you tear down and build up. They can only be used for preservation, but fortunately, one of the people on the team has done a number of, of restorations like this and could vouch for the ability to restore this building. So, so anyway, that was approved, so I just wanted to let the board know. The second thing was, we've now had seven farmers' markets in Union Hall, so it's called the South Lake Community Market, and they've been tremendously successful, they moved it up into a shaded area now, but typically, they're getting about 200 people, and they have about 17 vendors every Thursday from 4:00 to 7:00. And so it's gone really well, and, you know, VDOT and county staff helped us get this going, and it's just been awesome. And then the last thing I wanted to mention, this is just an idea, so we were talking about this electrical connectivity at the docks, and I know a person who is an electrical engineer and has just taken it upon herself to become an expert in this area. And I don't know if she'd be willing to come and brief the board, but it might be really interesting. She, I think what you'll find is that there are codes from several organizations that are in conflict, that prevent you from actually solving this problem. So I think she would come to the board, not with a solution, but she would come and make the board a lot more knowledgeable. So if you were interested, I could ask her, and, and she could potentially come to a meeting to give us a brief on that. So that's all I have.
Mr. Tatum, I should have started with you, because I know you've got to go.
Okay, I just wanted to thank the board for the movement on the contract with Friends of Faram Park, and just to give you a little report, since last fall, when we gave them the green light to start having their farmers' market, they had, they meet up there every Thursday from 3:00 to 7:00. And every Thursday, they're averaging around 400 people coming in through that farmers' market. Just last week, they had a flea market there, and they actually set up on the road going up so that they could stay, maintain, and stay in the shade, they had over 800 people come through that day for the flea market. So there, there, there's a lot of activity going, and the actions this board took today is greatly appreciated, and, and I just wanted to say, I, I appreciate the support and, uh, on them now, balls in their court. So, thank y'all, and...
Thanks, Tim.
I'm going to work.
Thank you.
Keep, keep your head down.
Be safe, Tim.
See y'all.
Ms. Smith?
I've just had two reminders, Chris, I'm not sure if you said this, I haven't done it, tell me.
Okay.
We've got our VACO official summit on August 15th, did you say that?
I did not, I, I, I may have mentioned that it's coming up, I had the one last week, but thank you for the reminder, VACO summit.
Okay, I didn't want to be redundant.
No, you're not, August 15th, right?
Yeah, so we've got that coming up, and the other thing, as soon as more information is available, I'll share it, but I mentioned it at the regional meeting last week, but the governor is having a summit for rural prosperity in southwest Virginia. And it's going to be in Woodville, October 29th and the 30th. And there's no portal open yet for registration, I think we ought to look at what this agenda is going to look like, because it may very well fit with our strong advocacy on the transportation side and other issues that, that we'll talk about Thursday with our legislative agenda. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I just have one thing, and I think I've talked about this before, comprehensive services, I don't know if you all looked at the accounts payment list, $667,230. We, as a board, I think we need to maybe discuss this a little bit in our retreat or something, and, and, or work with the school system, but we have got to get a handle on this, it's, it's becoming out of hand.
Most of that's coming from courts.
Oh, I know, I know it is, but we, I think we need to really start talking about it, and that, that's all I had.
Mike, if I may?
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Chairman, you know, we're a million dollars over budget, you know, and things that are driving that are unsustainable, which are, these vendors are able to charge whatever they want. And that's going to show up on our legislative agenda, but the other thing is, we are getting more and more complex cases that are getting referred for residential placements. And these are over six figures a year for each child, and the numbers are growing, the vendor costs are growing, and, and localities cannot continue to sustain these numbers. So strategically, I think this board does, I think we do need to discuss that, and CPMT, I know, is all over it. There's some things going on that I think maybe Heather could brief the board on, measures that are going on to help to try to mitigate some of this.
Mr. Mitchell?
I just want to say a big thank you to all the county employees that have been outside working in this heat. It's been rough, and I, I thank them for their service and what they're doing, and, uh, and speaking of that, I've had a lot of attention about dump sites, and I brought it up before, I'd, I'd love to see what we could do on pushing forward on, on, down in Snow Creek.
James?
Got a couple of things, uh, I'd like the board to start considering using the IDA a little bit more than we have been in the past. Pretty much, I mean, when I served on it, it was just a conduit, and, and they're capable of doing a whole lot more than what we're doing now, with, and take the load off maybe staff and us. And we got a young lady here that can really help work with the IDA and lead it. I talked to Phil Noah with me and Lori did here a week or two ago, and he spoke very, very highly of her, and he said she could definitely help the IDA. Spoke with Danny a little bit earlier today before the meeting, and, and she said she'd be willing to do that. I'm not saying this is something that's got to be done, I'm saying this is a year, two years down the road, but we ought to be working to it. I don't know when the appointments come up, but I'll be honest with you, for what the ID, IDA can do, I served on it seven years, and I wasn't qualified to do it. Really, we ought to be looking, like I said, getting, looking, getting some realtors on the board, some bankers, some builders possibly, somebody that knows in, in the trade and, and planning that could really help. Just be considering and think about it, and I'm not sure when, like I said, when the appointments come up, but we ought to be looking at that. The other thing, I went to the school board meeting the other day, and they had mentioned, they have a presentation there from Solar Solutions or something, a solar company, and they're talking about putting solar on schools. He's smooth talk, I don't know if y'all watched it, but he, he could, he was very, give a very good presentation. They use students to actually do the, help with the installation, and they get so many college graduates to do this, and, and to do it and all like that. I was sitting there thinking about it, I think, I mean, like, he had five schools that he had surveyed, and he called them low-hanging fruit, it'd be easier to do. Wind gap was one of them, these schools, the county owns them, right? So is that something that we need to be involved in, or they need to involve us in it?
I, I would say, Mr. Jamison, if, if I may, Mr. Chairman, yeah, the, the county technically, the, the schools are technically owned by the school board, until such time they're decommissioned, and then they become county facilities. And we'll be having that discussion as well for Henry and Bert Chimney, you know, schools coming up. So technically, we don't necessarily own them until they're decommissioned, and as I understand, Mr., Mr. Gwen, if I'm, help me here if I'm off track, but after they're decommissioned, they're certainly, you know, county facilities. But i.e., at the end of the day, you know, the county builds the schools, essentially, the facilities, I mean, we, we issue the debt and we, we fund the debt.
So are we having to say what, I mean?
In, in terms of the maintenance and so forth, you know, that's all administered and managed by the school system and their maintenance department, their facilities department. I know Brandy works with them very, very closely, and has been specifically looking at the, the schools that will likely be decommissioned, but we don't technically oversee their staff in, in terms of if they would like to install solar panels on their buildings and so forth, that, that falls, it's their responsibility, if you will.
Just wanted to make you aware of it, you know?
But, but that is helpful information for us, and from time to time, we do have these companies that come by to say, hey, you know, is there a county facility, or the landfill, as an example, as areas that could possibly be utilized for, for solar?
I don't know whether they are interested or not, I mean, several of them talk like, you know, it'd be a good thing, something to look into, and like I said, just wanted to make the board aware of it, sure, that's all I got.
Alright, I'll, I'll only have a couple of things, I mean, I've got a couple of other things, but they can wait till a later date. I wanted to tell everybody that as far as the 14th of, of... I wanted to tell everybody that as far as the 14th of August for the fair, when it starts, I've asked Tim to do the opening statements. I'm not gonna be there. I had already made plans to go to the VACO meeting, was gonna go after the opening statements, but I got a letter the other day, I'm gonna go to Baptist Wake Forest, have a bunch of tests run, I'll be down there for a while, I don't know how long, but that's what's going on there with, what's going on with me. And I know a lot of you church people, and I covet your prayers. Thursday, we have updates from, from the legislature, there will be a packet there for you of all of the legislative updates. One of them in particular that I've been dealing with, I've gotten three phone calls already, and I asked VDOT to be there, and I told them that they could be first, and it won't take long, and it's got to do, it's stored in the back of your books, but anyway, it'll be there, I'll tell you that. It's got to do with the speed limit signs. The governor or the congressman have said that speed limits can be controlled now on roads by the board of supervisors. I've already had requests for Crow's Gap to be lowered down to 15 miles an hour. There's a lot of questions. VDOT has a procedure in place, that's why I asked him to be there, to tell us their procedure. I don't know who's gonna buy these signs, I don't know who's gonna put them up. It's like I told one of the guys when he called me, I said, well, just because there's a sign up there, doesn't mean they gonna slow up. You gotta get law enforcement to enforce it, and then that comes down to our sheriff's department and to our state police. So, there's a whole lot of questions. And then, another question, just something for you to think about. Say there's, say there's 20 houses in this particular subdivision, and you get a call from one person that wants the speed limit lowered down to, say, 25, and then we lower the speed limit down for whatever criteria, and then that one person called you, and then that speed limit's lowered to 25, and then you get five calls from somebody saying, why'd you lower the speed limit? I want it back up. Then, you know, we gotta set up criteria. So, I think this is important, it won't be a long discussion, but give you something to think about, because it's a whole lot, it's a whole lot involved. And I mean, is it gonna dump, is it gonna dump more work on Brandy and her staff to put up signs? Have we gotta get a sign machine and start making the speed limit signs and all of that? I don't know how much that stuff costs. I don't even know if she's got a place to put it, but this is something that we've gotta work out, and I'm surprised that some of the rest of you haven't gotten calls, but maybe, anyway, that's what, that's what's going on with that.
About that, Ronnie, so right now, VDOT has a whole process that you go through regarding the speed limit, and so...
Right, and they gonna be here Thursday to do that.
Yeah, I know, and so what's really interesting is, they do a study, so now you have a traffic engineer who's rendering an official decision, which feels much better. I'm not a traffic engineer, I don't, I can't say whether it should go up or down, so it's really nice to have that assistance, so you have an authority that's telling you what the speed limit should be, rather than one of us or a citizen.
I agree with you, that's why we gotta have this meeting to work these particulars out. And that's all I got. So, now, anybody else got anything? Give everybody an opportunity. Staff, y'all all right? You just mad at Chris, you get after him. All right, we will be recessed until July the 18th at 3. That's Thursday.